Council called the mean order for the record is December seventh, twenty twenty one at four thirty P M. We'll begin this afternoon's city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro.
I'm here. Hi.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
I'm here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Council President Burnt.
My distinct privilege to make a motion to accept the agenda or approve the agenda as published.
I can the motion.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is agreed to. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mister.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Very grateful for the opportunity to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consensus agendas. Any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will move on to item into our department commission reports. First item up is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen fifty seven and ordinance to many emergency code section ten four two. Regarding requirements for firefighter air replenishment system FARS for new buildings. Adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date. Turn this over to Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor and Council, hopefully this is a an easy one tonight. I'm going to use the E word. For the last couple of months, actually a lot of months. Thanks to Emily Kane from the Attorney's Office. She's been working with me and with Sam Zorka, the building official. Working with Nampa Fire, working with Boise Fire. We've all come up with Nampa Fire and ourselves have come up with a an ordinance. To go along with the adoption of the twenty eighteen fire code that we did. A couple of years ago and what this is is in in the fire code is appendix L, which is firefighter air replenishment systems. And in there, it does not specify when it's required. And so what you have before you is an ordinance that just that spells out when that system is required. And what we have come up with is the language. When the building is five stories or more in height above grade. When it is two stories or more below grade. Or if the building is five hundred thousand square feet or more in size on a single level, that's when that will be. When they'll be required and looking at that, we partnered with our partners across the street and they are actually installing it before our ordinance has been activated. We also have another project that's being looked at. Over by the village and they also have agreed. They're like that. We see the benefits of this and we want to put it in our building. So we actually have two different developers that are see the benefit of it and they're they're putting it in their buildings ahead of time. So. With that, we did send. Chief Johnson and I sent information out to the building community to let them know about it. We did get one comment back, which. In my letter, it said we got none, but we got we did get one comment back recently. We we actually tweaked the. The ordinance a little bit because of that comment, so it was very beneficial to us and. I sit on the code amendment, fire code and safety building council, something for Canyon County. And just yesterday, we approved their ordinance, which again is the same language that we're using. So that way it's it's an ease between districts. I did talk with Chief Gervais the other day. He had originally said he was going to wait until the twenty twenty one code adoption. Rounds, but since then, since we're going ahead and moving forward with our ordinances. He said he has to modify his wildland ordinance and he's going to go ahead and adopt FARS at that time. So he'll do a mid year. Code amendment also. So Boise will be on board with FARS as also. So with that, I'll stand for any questions and.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Council, questions or comments?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
No, no, no questions. However, the mayor and I were able to go and witness and check out this new system, the bar system. It's it's actually. It's going to save lives and it's going to. Be incredibly beneficial to the our fine men and women in blue who are fighting fires. In our in in city Meridian. So grateful for this new resolution and very grateful for this new process. Thank you.
Councilwoman Strater.
I did have a question. I was pretty surprised the building community didn't provide more comments, at least support of this.
Councilwoman Strater, we're having a real hard time understanding your comments. They're a little low volume, but it's.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, huh, I don't know what happened. I was a little surprised the building community didn't provide more commentary or at least more support. I know we don't have a lot of facts for buildings and maybe that's part of the reason. Is the construction of the actual system literally there fairly straightforward? What does that look like?
I don't.
Mister Mister Mayor, I I believe that Councilwoman Strater is just asking. How the construction of the of the of FARS inside the buildings, how straightforward it is.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Mister Mayor, Councilwoman. I can't hear you very well. So to that. We have. So we have a company that we're working with, the Air Coalition. They're the ones that donated that system to us. That's in our training tower right now that we're going to be utilizing to train on the system. So they work with. The the other company that puts the systems together and they have certified technicians throughout the United States. And there's actually a couple here in the in the in our area that that can do the work of the install. So we don't have any issues. As a matter of fact. The building, two buildings across the street, the company. I believe they're out of Texas. They said they will come up and install them if they have to. So they will make sure that we are taking care of our systems are serviced and installed properly.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater, was that your question and answer?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
If I could just echo what Council President Burnt said, very impressed by the system and what it will do and. Gracious for our development community for proactively getting this put in place as we have one of our. Larger buildings currently going in across the street and as you mentioned, several others are on the horizon.
Yeah, very thankful. Also, we've got a great community that we work with and I'm I'm thankful for all of them.
With that, what is our action this evening?
Mister Mayor, you do have the ordinance on the agenda for approval.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I guess a question, hopefully you can hear me. Do we need to amend the ordinance to reflect changes received via email and bring it back or can we approve it? Tonight?
I was under the impression the version in front of us has the change that was recommended. And that is confirmed confirmed from Deputy Chief shaking up his head up and down. So. We can move this version forward this evening.
Mister Mayor, if that's the case.
Councilwoman Strater, go ahead.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen fifty seven. The ordinance amending Meridian City Code section ten or two regarding requirements for a firefighter air replenishment systems for new buildings. Adopting a savings clause. I'm writing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the ordinance is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Appreciate it. Next item before us is item fourteen, which is human resources, discussion of new format and policy manual. I will turn this over to Director Ritchie. And Mister Mary, but recognize you first.
All right. Good afternoon, Mister Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for having Bill and I this afternoon. I am going to refer to some notes tonight. I typically try not to do that, but I want to make sure that I cover all the information we want to share with you today. On myself, on behalf of myself, the H R department, the legal department, as well as finance and I T. So. As you know, the Meridian City Council is the policymaking branch of our city government. City ordinance one dash seven dash three states that the members of the city council are the legislative and policymaking branch. Of the government for our city. We're bringing forward to you a proposal for a newly formatted and updated policy and procedure manual. To the one that we have today. One of the current challenges that we have today with the existing policy and procedures. Are that the procedures are embedded within those policies. Anytime that we want to make an operational change to a procedure or a process that's captured in the the policy. We have to bring that operational change in front of all of you for discussion and approval. When it's an operational function, not the policy itself. And so that's a challenge of time. It's a challenge of updating. It's a it's. Time consuming to do so. So as a result, the H R department and the legal department partnered together. In an effort to review, update and revise the current policy and procedure manual. So on November ninth, we sent to you. A proposal of a newly formatted and redesigned policy and procedure manual. What that encompassed was changing. The format to break out policies and procedures. And we wanted to separate those to align with that ordinance. So then anytime a policy needs to be changed, we're bringing forward that policy to you for discussion and your future approval. The updating of the information within that policy manual consisted of reviewing each and every single policy and procedure to ensure that we had consistent terminology. So for example. Things like department head is no longer the current terminology that we use here at the city. Our department directors. Is the terminology that we use today rather than department head. So we took a look at making some consistent terminology changes. The review of the actual policy manual itself recruited included a review and an update of all of the operational procedures. To ensure that they accurately reflected the current operational practices of the departments in the city. In addition to that, we're proposing the addition of two new sections to be added to the citywide policy manual. That would be section nine and section ten. One of those would be citywide finance policies. And then the last section, excuse me, would be citywide I T policies. Policies that cover all of our employees here at the city. So with that information, along with the information that we provided to you in the memo that we sent to you on November ninth. Bill, Todd, Dave and myself are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Crystal at this time or before we see Mister Nary or Mister. E D or Le Boy have anything else there like that? I just figured we stopped right there real quick for Crystal questions.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Share.
Hopefully you'll hear me, but. If not, I could run in in between the meetings to show up for the next one. The one question I had was we've added in a lot of language about. Department head, like department director, designate needs. And that looks kind of like a new concept. Is that something we're doing in practice where designate needs make operational decisions?
So I could probably answer that question. Mister Members of Council, Councilwoman Strater, so. Give you a tiny bit of back history. Well, the city never had a policy manual until the early eighties. Brent Kingsford was the mayor of Meridian at the time. He was a part time position. He was a school teacher. The city actually adopted the Western native school district policies in total. And so that's what they stood for about almost twenty years. Two thousand and two, city had a contracted law firm. It paid one of their partners. To basically redraft the entire policy manual. So that's what the form we have today. So when we've over the years since about two thousand and four, as we've amended the policies, we've added director. Or director designee for certain for certain policies that didn't necessarily require a director to make a decision because again, we have. Separate divisions in departments such as public works. Where it may be, it may be more appropriate or necessary for the director to designate the wastewater superintendent to be the person making that decision. Because they understand what the operational need may be or the the police department. It may be something that a patrol lieutenant could be designated as the person to deal with that particular types of issue. So. That was the intention. And what we've done over the years is. And that's where I think Crystal and I do want to give a shout out very much to Laurlee Berg and to and to Andrea Pogue. For really doing the heavy lift here. They did all of this review. They rewrote all of them to meet our current needs or meet the right terminology. If you read the words, most of the policies, the words are exactly the same. They haven't changed. A few have because the laws changed, so we try to keep up with that. But most of them are the same, so they had to break those out. But yeah, we were looking at when when would it make more sense? That you really want the director to be the decision maker, period, or it may be a designate because again, it's something that could be delegated. To somebody else because the department is large enough that you have in various divisions, water, wastewater. Different fire stations, captains, maybe the ones designated to make decisions about operations, things like that. So I hope that answers your question.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Um, yeah, it did. I didn't have an issue with it. To me, I can tell you put a lot of thought into it and it seems like really.
And Councilwoman Strater, I don't know if if you might need to eat your mic, try as close as you can. We heard. I think we got the gist of that, but you at the very end it dropped away off.
It didn't sound like a question.
Was wasn't a question. Is that any better? Maybe the space bar, that's weird. It seems like a good update. I appreciate all the effort and. I'm not troubled by the addition of that means. Thank you.
That's a general thumbs up.
Yes.
As of this point.
That's what I got.
Before we, what would Mister Le Boy, Mister T D, do you have anything else that you would like to add as pertains to the? If I could, just on that council. My my viewpoint was if we were going to ask our employees to adhere to those two policies that they should be put into the manual as well. And so that's why those two new areas are being incorporated into these. They've been there or that they've been out there. Employees have been expected to know and follow them, but they were incorporated. And so that's why they've been added at this time. Just for that standpoint.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
And to that point, question probably Bill, with those new sections nine and ten dealing with finance and I T. As we were reading through, there was a memo talking about adopting that section into the policy manual or do we have to do a separate approval for that? Or if we approve it, it's already incorporated and we're adopting all those changes as well.
Mister Members of the Council, Councilwoman Hoagland, the latter. So the intention would be, again, as the mayor stated, those have already been reviewed by council and approved. But they were separated from the rest of the policy manual. So now they'll all be incorporated. They'll now be one through is it ten? You said nine and ten, one through ten. And so those are always provided to employees. We give them access. We show them where it is. They can have a hard copy if they want it. So they'll just be easier to get to it. It'll be easier to see it. That's it. That was the intent.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Hoagland.
Yeah, this is this is is a much cleaner approach to it and and really takes out some of the confusion and trying to follow through. So it was well done. So. Appreciate all the hard work that people put into it.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I I had sent an email to Crystal, but I'd like to ask this for everyone here. Wondering if the city. Has or has discussed implementing a policy to have employees review this manual on a regular basis. It's my understanding that. They're given a copy or a digital copy or the location to it when they hire on and that there's not necessarily a consistent time. Or times of the year that they are asked to review the policies and or it's left up to the director. So. I'm curious if Crystal can share with us and then if there's anything else that. We can do to discuss it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perro. Historically, over the past, we, when we came together for open enrollment, those were mandatory in person meetings. And at that point in time, we had documents that were available to all employees that they had to sign. Stating that they acknowledged that they knew that the policies were available to them and that they needed to adhere to them. Since we've migrated away from those mandatory in person meetings, we have not had a routine or annual update. From employees acknowledging that they know where the location is for the entire manual. What we have done in lieu of that is anytime that a new policy or a change to a policy came forward to each of you and was approved. That information goes out per our policy through communications to those employees and that's their acknowledgement. It is something that you brought forward. It is something that I've mentioned to Bill that we want to review and discuss. For existing employees, I will tell you that from a new employee's perspective that is addressed and they do sign an acknowledgement statement in the new employee orientation. On day one, and then there's follow up with their supervisors over the course of the first ninety days. In case they have any questions about any of the policies that they're covering either on their own or in conversation. With expectations from their supervisor and then of course, human resources is always available. But yes, we are going to be discussing incorporating an annual review or an annual acknowledgement, if you will.
Well, we have had an annual acknowledgement. I cramp training, which we used to do, had an affirmative. Box that all employees had to check to say that they had read. The policy. So it that was then through I cramp our third party. They 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 didn't require that this last year. Was the first time I'm I'm open to mine aware, but previous seven, eight years, you had to as an employee acknowledge that you had read. And I don't know if it required you to read it then at that exact moment. But it did have an affirmative response.
It used to give you the option to review it because we had to upload it to the I cramp site for employees to access. If they wanted to read through before acknowledging it. They could, or they simply could just acknowledge that they knew where it was located and that they're responsible for understanding each of the city policies. Up until that point, that's correct. Last year, they did not include that as a part of the program that we participated in on an annual basis. In preparation for this next cycle. It's one of the questions that I'm working with I cramp on to see if that's going to be included or if the city needs to establish their own process going forward.
Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I would like to encourage that that employees are. You're requested to go over these, whether it's in an all staff meeting at some point during the year with the directors or during the performance review or something and and even it. Perhaps not the whole manual, but perhaps, you know, social media policy, things that are citywide and then whatever specific to their department. I there's some really important information in here and I think it's. It would be beneficial to staff to review it on a fairly regular basis.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Couple of questions. First off, it as it relates to monetary changes in policy, that will always come back to the council for review, correct? All right, perfect. I know that I have some fellow council members that would really like to. Have a discussion about this as well that aren't here this evening. I know Mister Borton. Incredibly interested in this is in, we all know that Mister Cavanagh is also has some. Some questions with the details and such. Any way that we can continue this discussion if if. For two or three weeks or whatever the case may be. Mayor and I or Brad as well, whether we can talk about what what that looks like in a future agenda. That I don't think we need a lot of time, but just a couple of weeks or so, just to make sure that other council members are okay with this, these policy changes.
Mister Members of the Council, so our intention was to bring back a resolution next week. We don't have to. I mean, there's certainly no. Necessity to do it next week, whatever works on a scheduled basis. We would like to put this project to bed as much as we can.
Yeah, sure.
Definitely. I recognize there's always going to be a few questions here and there.
Sure.
But we definitely recognize that fiscal policies, those always have to come to council. And even in first, even if procedures have some fiscal impact, they all require council approval because money has to be there, right? You have to have the budget to actually do it. So.
I think a week's fine, you know, if if that's if we can do this, maybe have a maybe. I think a week's fine, you know, if if uh, that's if we can do this, maybe have a maybe uh a short discussion if needed.
Sure.
From other council members, if they have any other questions, um, we can talk about it then. That's okay with me.
Yeah, my understanding Councilman Borton has been in constant contact and had all of his questions. I don't know about Councilman Cavanaugh, that one I'm not familiar, but put it on next week for resolution and just put this discussion before it in case there's any additional questions.
Sure.
Okay. Council, any additional questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Next item up is under community development department downtown design review approach. Turn this over to Mr. McClure or Mr. Hood, apparently. Come on, Brian.
Don't worry, Mr. Mayor, you uh won't have to put up with too much. I'm just going to do a little bit of an intro and then Brian's got most of the heavy lifting.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
He is gonna uh pull open uh a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to work from. What we'd like to do this afternoon is just explore with you an opportunity. Um, I'll cut to the chase in that opportunity. Staff is recommending um that we um move forward with an effort to establish some design standards for new projects in downtown, but uh those how we get there is kind of where we need some direction. And I guess I want to confirm with you that you think that that's a effort that we should undertake. So so again, we're talking about downtown architectural design review um into establish potential downtown specific processes and standards for new projects in downtown Meridian. So in twenty fifteen, the city adopted the architectural standards manual or the ASM. So they heard that a little bit this afternoon ASM. The ASM replaced the previous design manual. The ASM is less about design, which is subjective and more about the level of effort. Uh, so the purpose there is to set maintain a baseline level of effort uh for the design and construction of buildings within the city. It does apply to new structures, but also additions would would is subject to administrative design review. So a lot of projects are subject to design review with those standards are limited and we'll get into that a little bit more. Uh, a couple of other things on how the process currently works for design review. It's again, citywide applies to basically everything, but except for single family homes. And even then, in certain instances where council uh reviews a project for single family homes along an arterial that you're concerned about, you have made specific development agreement provisions to say, hey, we want those to go through design review as well. Um, but generally it's for commercial and industrial type of buildings, multi-family structures. Um, and again, that applies citywide, so it's not context sensitive necessarily. There are different um, design elements that are required along different types of roadways or in different zoning districts, but it's not context sensitive, so to speak. So the citywide standards currently apply downtown, which may not be enough. And so we'll get into that a little bit. One of the other takeaways along in that same vein is um that not all standards in the ASM apply in all conditions. So there are a number of qualifiers in the manual. Again, usually arterial roadways, those types of things being adjacent to a a di- um, existing residential. Uh, there are some specific standards for how a commercial building is designed and constructed um or visible from uh public open spaces and parks. Um, but if those aren't applicable, then the city has basically taken more of a hands off approach and uh, we don't have a lot of standards that apply or any standards that apply for that matter. So then the minimum level of effort really becomes exceptionally bare minimum. Um, and as long as you meet the building code and off you go. So again, we think maybe a higher level of effort in downtown where foresighted archi- architecture and a little more context sensitivity uh could come into play. So um some of the the other issues with general application in downtown, so the general ASM application in downtown. It's been a staff concern for a while. We've seen some, I'll just say marginal projects go up. Um, but they've really not raised the hair on the back of anyone's neck. Um, but we've got some other projects that are a little more visible and some standards that made us really question um and get those complaints about how those buildings are designed. So Brian's really going to focus in a lot more of the presentation on the context, the issues and and some options. And see if council would like to modify the design review process for downtown. So I don't, I don't want you to necessarily uh answer these right now, but think about these as we're running through this and Brian will kind of ask you for some feedback as we go. And again, particularly towards the end, where we're looking for that general direction and level of effort and guidance. Um, I guess with the one exception, that first bullet, if if anyone says, you know what, we don't think we need to do this, we can stop the presentation right now and just be done with it. But we do want some confirmation um that that this that you two believe that this is something that could add value to the city that there's to some degree a problem with applying our existing design standards uh that apply throughout the rest of the city to our downtown. And then again, you have, there's some level of support there from council for staff to move forward with an effort here. Um, and then the second bullet would be, you know, that that general uh level of effort that you support. So um, we're going to talk to you about both how we come up with the standard. So who's at the table and who gets a say in what those standards are? And then after we adopt the standards, what that process looks like um is that a design review committee? Um, I haven't heard so much recently, but there's some other cities in the in the Treasure Valley that historically have gotten bad rap for their process for design review. And we don't want to emulate that, but we are looking for again, maybe some professional help um from some architects and others that maybe set up a committee to do some review on some of these things. But that's again, where we want to touch base with you and see what kind type of a process you'd be looking for uh as we move forward with after we uh adopt the standards. And then again, back to the kind of phase one, if you will, uh with a staff or consultant led project. Um, we've been thinking consultant led. In fact, I have some money in this year's budget for some consulting help that we're going to draw on to help with this project. Um, just in talking about that recently, in fact, uh Councilman Cavanaugh reached out and and honestly, I would, I would love for Brian to lead this project, but his bandwidth and I need him on other things. Just, and this is a pretty heavy lift in and of itself. I don't think I can dedicate him to leading this project uh by himself, but that would be ideal. He's probably the only one on staff that's qualified enough to lead the effort and I would be comfortable with the the finished product. So we really are kind of gauging that. Um, hiring, uh getting consultant help, um just because we don't have enough bandwidth to to tackle this uh as well. And then uh moving to the top right hand side of this slide, how big of a area should this apply to? Is it the core? Is it pine? Uh, the railroad tracks or further? So think about that too. Where where is that area that these standards? You don't have to answer that now, but some again, some general direction on what the downtown standard should be uh could overlay with with Old Town, the Old Town district. Um, you can make a case for for different boundaries. Um, and then again, I kind of already touched on the last bullet here, the types of exceptions or instances in which elected or appointed a committee uh could do architectural review. So is that just the standard that they all go through this process? Is it some uh trigger that that requires them to go to a design review committee? Um, are there hearings? We don't think the council wants to see all of these, but that's even on the table, right? I mean, if you want to see all of those things and be uh the final approval, we could write up the city code that that requires that process that way. So those are that's some of the direction we're looking for today. Some of this will amount to additional cost. However, a lot of this is about just managing expectations. A lot of this amounts to requiring additional attention to detail and thought in the design and not necessarily resulting in significant cost to the building. We've seen that if if um, you know, the our our customers, uh, we can sit down and work with them early and often, it oftentimes doesn't cost them anymore to have good design, to design something that fits in the context of where they're proposing to go. If we can sit down and get to them early and it's clear and understandable what what the expectations are, uh, it really doesn't affect the bottom line most of the time on the construction of these buildings. So I think this is about being transparent uh and clear in what we're trying to develop and why, and then again, being able to explain that. So so again, just to kind of put all that into two primary questions. Um, and again, this is assuming you want to do the project. The approach and um that we should take and if any, uh, whether this is staff level or um staff led or consultant led. For the approach, this could be a minimal administrative level of effort and generally relying on the ASM. So basically taking what we have already as ASM and tweaking that for downtown or a traditional discretionary review framework, uh, either with the design review committee or public hearing process or some uh combination of those elements. So I think with that, um, I will turn it over now to Brian and he can kind of walk, walk you through a little bit more of um, the whys and how he envisioned some of this playing out going forward. Um, but before I pass it, uh, pass the mic to Brian, I will stand for any question, initial questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you very much for the detailed memo that was um on the agenda. I I read through it a couple of times, trying to get my head around exactly um kind of the history of how we got to a place of of having this discussion and uh, most of it was regarding kind of the path forward and and what direction we should think about taking. And I was struggling to understand how this came to be. Was it, is it, is it observations? Is it public comment? Is it what planners have run into as they've uh done that design review and also was hoping maybe for some more examples um of we you talk a little bit about, you know, a building looks differently to a pedestrian than to a driver. Can we see visually what a difference might be in in um in those things? So anything like that would be helpful as well.
Mr. Mayor, uh Councilwoman Perro, just maybe working backwards a little bit. I I'm not sure if Brian has some examples that maybe he can show you some pedestrian level uh considerations versus vehicular motorist uh level considerations. I can share with you a little bit more on some of your previous questions or comments. Um, it is a little bit of both. It is both from the public and other stakeholders downtown on some of the construction projects. Um, like I said kind of earlier, though, a lot of it is just things that we've seen there may be tucked into the downtown, but really not on your major roadways in downtown, if you will. So some of the lesser local streets and some of the um multi-family projects that have gone up uh that maybe aren't. And again, the the attractiveness is kind of in the eye of the beholder. I'm sure that architect's very proud of their project, but it really doesn't fit in. You can get three and four story tall buildings that are next to single family twelve hundred square foot ramblers. And so those are some of the things that as staff, we cringe a little bit when we see that and we don't have a tool in our toolbox to say you need to be a little more sensitive to what's going on around you. We understand it's going to redevelop and intensify even over time. But how can you do that in a respectful manner of of the existing condition for downtown? So I don't have addresses for you off the top of my head, but if you if you drive around, you can see some of the newer projects that are maximizing the land and putting some density and some height and some building mass that really doesn't fit in as well as we'd prefer it to. But again, if that's, that's sort of a flavor of ice cream. Everyone likes their own. Some people like that, you know, it's eclectic. Um, and that's our downtown. Quite frankly, there there is a a mix of investment on different properties. So um, we've been tracking that again for quite some time and just recently and not to call any projects out, but there's been a couple of projects that that have come, that have been brought to our attention from others. Again, stakeholders, maybe they're existing business owners downtown. Um, just hearing about other projects that are coming in and they don't like the color of a building or the amount of glazing on a building or the height or whatever those things may be. So it's something where we've, we just felt it was time to daylight it more with council and say, do you think there's an issue too? Because again, if not, and you think the process is generally working, okay. We we won't go away necessarily, but we won't make this the next highest priority. We'll maybe do what I just mentioned and maybe look at tweaking our existing ASM a little bit more rather than set standing up a whole new process for design review downtown and maybe just tweak it to make a little bit better. Um, but if there's some real serious concerns and let's bring those stakeholders together. Well, I don't want to say that necessarily either because to develop the standard, we really do want design professionals and not just lay people to say this is what the standard should be. Um, but if we want to do that level of effort. So again, sorry to kind of ramble, but it's a culmination of things and um, we're finally getting around to talking to you about it. Hopefully that helps.
Council, any additional questions for Caleb as he walks away? Okay.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of of council, um, here are a few opportunities uh and concerns which are unique to downtown. The curse current ASM is really only about the building. The reason being for that is that site design is already uh receiving a considerable amount of design review as part of the plot process. Even uh architectures frequently reviewed through development agreements, giving council an early peek and then also helping to uh direct staff into in terms of what the public and council want to see with final determinations. Architectural style, predominant materials and many details are really just uh difficult to do with standards that are location deaf, which is what our ASM is. So you're used to seeing uh more sort of discretionary review as part of the plot process with a hearing entitlements. And and we don't have that downtown because most of those aren't involving a plot that goes straight to administrative, an administrative process. Uh, this hasn't worked great um as as stated because that is not greenfield. Uh, you can have very impactful projects that had no public hearing and no discretionary review. And then we're applying very generic design standards that were only meant for greenfield. Uh, just you, you could have a phenomenal building just designed immaculately and then put it in the exact wrong location and and sort of ruin the ruin the neighborhood. And and there's no checks. So that's sort of the concern from staff's perspective is that um, do you want to have a check? And that's one of the questions we'll revisit later. Uh, further, the city's increased an opportunity uh for impactful projects without frankly considering collateral impacts. The permit controls weren't a consideration when the city increased the uh design height from uh to seventy five and a hundred feet in downtown. Again, those those can happen now without a public hearing. Our standards weren't modified to consider not just the larger mass thing that isn't allowed anywhere else in the city, but the existing context and have already constructed an environment now more impacted. Staff doesn't have any framework to guide desired development for this type of construction and environment. And again, sort of the environment being the other, the other consideration here. The opposite end of the spectrum is also an issue. We've been seeing more duplex type projects in areas intended for commercial and transit oriented environments. These have skirted uh land development requirements for sidewalks, street lights, open space and really all the desired quality of place elements wanted in downtown while increasing density. It furthers land fragmentation, it makes it harder to get the project desired, and we don't see commiserate infrastructure along with those projects. Further, in downtown, we don't have large swaths of landscape buffers to separate very different construction. We allow one hundred foot uh buildings now, uh, which include multi-family, but there is limited site design, minimal parking, minimal space and no backup plan. That could happen next to nineteen fifteen cottage with zero setback. There's no, and this is the concern here. There's no mechanism for staff to force a hearing or open up discretionary review. Once that application comes in, if they meet our requirements, they're through. None of the current standards are meant for this. Lastly, zoning is a significant issue. Old Town is exceptionally fragmented in in the uh area covers. You can have uh very similar projects because there's very uh, for example, R fifteen and R forty allow multifamily. Old Town also allows multifamily. You can have those two next to each other with with uh night and day differences in terms of the development requirements for those structures. So there's no consistency. Um, when you have a very fragmented zoning based uh design review process, which is what the ASM is zoning based. So downtown especially, there's, there's no context again for the environment or for what's next door. This is a map uh showing showing that zoning. The red dash line there is the feature line use designation for Old Town. The brown area with the uh lighter colored Xs is the Old Town zoning. And then you can see CCLOR fifteen, R eight, industrial CG and a variety of other uh zoning designations within that area. All those have applied different architectural standards requirements in the current ASM. To plant the seed uh using the old, oh, the Old Town feature line use would be a uh an efficient way of sort of leveling the playing field for uh architectural requirements for for these areas of the city isn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily and actually wouldn't impact the uses allowed. It would just sort of make them all play by the same design standards for architecture. Caleb sort of touched on some of this already. Um, this is a level of effort chart. And there's a exceptional amount of variation between the in-between areas here. So there's, there's three examples here, but really you could do, the sky's the limit. Um, but I had to pick several just to give you a flavor. Um, this first one here, as Caleb sort of mentioned, would be tweaking the current ASM to have some additional considerations downtown. This one addressed neighborhood context, destination downtown districts, infrastructure deficiencies are really some of the other comp plan policies that we've heard are important. A middle approach here uh would be again largely to use the ASM still, but to create a secondary lane for the design review process where if you meet certain thresholds, you go from the standards uh objective based sort of express standards that we have in this ASM to a designer review committee. Um, so providing a a a committee of professionals with some additional oversight that staff isn't uh in a position to implement very well. Finally, the the right Finally, the, the right end of the spectrum here, from my perspective, is sort of the best way to do this. But that's only assuming that time and money were not a consideration. Really a hybrid form based code is sort of what allows you to really consider the context of your development truly and apply standards that are appropriate based off the, the desired use in that location. However, the process to get there is fairly timely, a heavy lift and probably wouldn't be used all that often to be, to be honest. As a final note, regardless of these three options or any other, if council likes to have staff do something, the community engagement process and element of this is likely to be a heavy lift regardless of anything else. It's a contentious and passionate topic and meaningfully listening and educating the, the community on this is, is going to take a lot of work. Regardless of any approach that staff did, these are some of the assumptions that we want to consider. We like to consider gates or flags where additional public review is required, whether by council for the user scale, for a committee for design or any other range of options. The complaints we have heard would require some of the allowed by right uses that we currently have to, at least with respect to design, have some sideboards imposed on them. Staff would absolutely want to involve the Historic Preservation Commission. That, their level of effort would very much depend on the approach we took. But at a minimum, understanding their perspective wants needs before crafting any solution is important. Just like HPC with the same opportunities and constraints based on the project, MDC would need to be involved. And, and finally, as previously mentioned, public engagement seems pretty crucial, given our business environment and existing residents. So staff, for you, for your consideration at this point is conceptually recommending some type of hybrid approach. This would involve continuing use of the ASM. It's efficient for most of the city and likely for many smaller, less impactful projects in downtown. Again, with some tweaks, we'd also recommend a discretionary designer review committee of professionals for the more impactful projects and what those sideboards are. We haven't considered those and we aren't proposing those. Just understanding that some sort of sidebar would allow a discretionary review approach for whatever is defined as impactful. Ideally, that process would not be optional. That way, current planning staff aren't bullied frankly into approving projects that they don't want to and shouldn't be doing. An overlay zone is also recommended, as I sort of mentioned before. This is, so the size and scale is considered a context with the designer view and so that all development in close geographic proximity plays by the same architectural design rules. It doesn't mean that all projects in downtown would have the same standards, whether by streets, districts, or some other component that could be customized. Finally, staff would need some additional support, whether that's by outreach, whether it's for outreach, code review, process review, or standards development. There's just more work than we can handle right now. Also, outside perspective is incredibly useful, even if just to bounce off ideas. To be clear, that the purpose of this recommendation would be to drive impactful projects to a designer review committee, but not all projects. This would also not be a form based code process that can be more transparent and has more defined sideboards. But it also requires a lot more work than we're likely to realize benefit from. Today, we're looking for general direction and level of effort guidance from you. Depending on direction and feedback today, we would come back to you with a refined solution or proposal. And then just, we don't need that all today. So we'd like to have a discussion with you today, but certainly we can take comments and feedback from you over the next week or two before we move forward with something.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Ryan, thank you very much. Would you say that most of the feedback that's been received that prompted this was aesthetic concerns, functional concerns, a combination of both? Is there, is it leaning more heavily toward the aesthetics of, these are, the feedback that we're getting from the public and the stakeholders are on projects that have already been completed, right? So there's not a lot that can be done at that point, but can you give us the flavor of what, I really, again, I'm still somewhat missing examples of I, I'm generally understanding what it is that you're trying to do. I just, before I, I can say, yeah, I think we should go down this road and explore how to resolve this. I need to understand the problem a little more.
Mr. Mayor, Councilperson Perro. I, I've, I don't want to call out specific projects, but I, I've, I've heard the, and most of the comments I receive are several done, several steps down the telephone game. So I don't, and I know, so I won't know use names either. But I can't say I've heard the full gamut, everything you've suggested. It usually conflicts with someone else's opinion. And it's for both proposed and existing projects. They are both small and large projects. So I mentioned the smaller projects. Those are all over downtown now. You can see frankly, square boxes shoved in dark holes with entrances to the buildings down both sides with a fence four foot off their doors. It's, it's really not sort of the aesthetic that I understand we're looking for. And then we have big projects that have been considered or being proposed and those have had whirlwind of comments on them that we've received from all over the place. So I don't know if that helped at all or not, but yes, to everything you said, we've heard it all and for both existing and proposed projects.
Councilor Holden.
I was curious, Brian, is it possible that a design review committee could be specific to an area as opposed to community wide?
Mr. Mayor, Councilperson Hogan, absolutely. So the staff recommendation, which is exceptionally cursory at this point, would be to just look at designer review only for downtown, downtown area. And only for whatever we define as impactful projects. Like we, we do, code currently does have a designer review committee reference in it. We just don't ever use it because applicants find they can frankly push staff into the end of the decision they're looking for.
That's what I'm hoping. Just kind of comment and I'll come with a question, but you know, we've got another deal tonight on the Fields District, you know, and this is wide open and we're going to try and figure out what's this going to look like. And you know, downtown's the same way. It's, 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 we have a downtown and there are new things happening and that's exciting, but there's going to be a lot of opportunity and I, I don't want to miss that opportunity. We're going to shape what downtown Meridian looks like for future generations. So you know, I, I, I'm kind of of the go big approach to this to, in terms of, let's do it the best possible way that we can, because we might only have one shot at this. But you know, as, as I think about those things, to me, what, what do we take in for the area that is it just Old Town? And here we have the property at Northwest Cherry and Meridian. It was Fadden Property? Yeah. Where that's going to be a new development at, at some point in time, right there on the corner. So now do we take it in? Is it the Northern Gateway Urban Renewal District as our area? You know, what if you have a, just a completely modern look over here and we go with more of a historical look for Old Town? Does, how, how does that fit? How does that flow? You know, those are considerations. And of course, if you go urban renewal, then you have the Union District, you ought to have that there. Just some of those things on how does this all fit? And you know, the comment about, you know, got a big building next to a little, little thing, but is that going to be a structure that does go away in the future? And how do we balance those effects? So and, and ideas. And I definitely want to have stakeholder involvement. People who are investing in downtown who want to keep downtown as a destination that's unique, has its own vibe. They definitely, I, I want them to be part of that, that process. So is what I talk about when you look at all these things. It sounds like you, you've recommended a consultant approach and also I'm concerned about, we've got so much growth in Meridian that with the limited staff we have, you've got more than enough on your plate. Is it possible that you can still work with a consultant as well as keeping everything else, all the other balls up in the air as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogan, I'm very pleased to hear you ask those questions. Those are all questions we've asked ourselves and we don't have any answers for them currently. Other than the sort of the Old Town line you just because we have code and policy in place. With regard to the level of effort sort of in staff's overhead. I don't know. It's really sort of a, a Caleb and new director determination there. Certainly your priorities and the mayor's priorities are very important and things can be pushed around. I think what we discussed was having staff work on something like this in collaboration with, with a consultant. So which is sort of frankly, what we did with the comprehensive plan, that the amount of time that staff spent out in outreach at parks. It was ridiculous. Well, it wasn't, it was ludicrous. We, we can do that here too. So we can, we can do the work we're able to, and then the work we can't, we'll manage a project and the work we can't, the consultant will sort of do some of that. And whether that's they help us with outreach and, and, and manage that, or whether they help us with design standards, or whether they look to a code review. I mean, all of that sort of an option and all of it can be considered tweaked, modified. We, we don't have a solution to that yet, but yes, we can, I'm sure we'll make it work.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
When staff, when it says that staff is recommending a consultant, is that to put together those sideboards to put together those recommendations in a, in a one-time way? And then staff will then take those and apply them as the review comes in? Or is it an ongoing desire for a consultant to review every, you know, every application that comes in that requires an application with the ASM in downtown is, or is it both?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, that's a really good question and I'm sorry I wasn't clear in that. So the, the proposal would be to have a consultant help us with a one-time process of whatever that is. And then from then on out, it would either be staff or staff in a design committee or staff and council or whatever that is, but it would be, it would be internal, internal work, no longer relying on a consultant to implement. So, Mr. Mayor, can, can I just piggyback on that answer a little bit? I mean, to again, be transparent in that though, that is ongoing level of effort for staff and we don't currently have anybody, Brian mentioned it, but it's been several years since we've had to pull together that architectural standards committee, the architects we have on call. And this would be something where probably monthly or at least quarterly, someone's got to call them together, have a meeting. And so there is, I'm not saying that justifies a new FTE necessarily, but there is more things that we would do after the consultant helps us stand this up ongoing that staff then has to figure out how to balance that or work that into the workload too. So we haven't spent too much time on that, but that's certainly something, depending on level of effort and how we want to set this up. There is an investment by the city to do this for sure. So again, to what level that investment is, that's some of the direction we're, we're asking for.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bur.
Thanks guys. Quick question. What's the time, if we were to do this hybrid model, I mean, in this, or this approach, what's, what's the timeframe from start to finish, do you think? Just roughly? I know that you, I know that it looks like you've put a lot of thought into this and you have a lot on your mind and there's a lot of moving parts, but generally speaking, what, what do you think that timeframe looks like?
So, Mr. Mayor, Council President Bur, I, I, you know, I would think with this next fiscal year, nine months or so to a year, probably something like that to develop this, to do the surveys. Again, depending on which low to high you choose. I mean, if we go all in, go big, it may take a little bit longer to make sure we've got everybody, heard from everybody, but roughly a year.
Mr. Mayor, follow up?
Councilman Bur.
And with regard to that, our growth compared to like, for example, Boise, our, our friends to the east. They've gone through growing pains just like we are. So what does that look like? What do they do? Do they do something similar to this approach? What, how did they approach their growth with, with density in their downtown corridor?
Honestly, Mr. Mayor.
How did we get jumped? That beautiful building? Was that through a design review committee? I think it is.
So just to answer your question, maybe the mayor kind of sort of did. Design review committee can make bad decisions or, you know, there's subjectivity in there, right? A discretionary approach. I, I don't know what, what's triggered in Boise or where that line is administrative only staff level and you don't have to go to the design review committee. Or, or if everything does. And that's kind of what I was alluding to a little bit earlier. We don't necessarily need the work either and we don't want to push everybody through design review. We have other stuff to do. But we figured like there are some triggers, some gates or flags as Brian, that, that, okay, this, someone should be reviewing this to make sure it fits. I don't know exactly what all those if here or if this tall or if this big or if this whatever, go to that process, but we, we honestly, this isn't modeled after any other city around us. This is just, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, that, that was just a question that Ms. Raider wanted me to ask her, her microphone or her computer's not working. But at the end of the day, I mean, I, I mean, downtown Meridian is growing. People have caught vision of what we're looking for and, and you know, investors, business owners, developers are excited to make an investment. And with that comes, you know, good problems to have in my opinion. But one thing that those folks need is consistency. And I, I get that the, the Old Town designation is very, I'm somewhat vague, you know, because of it's downtown and these buildings are old and we don't want to stifle growth or creativity and every building can be different. I, I get why Old Town designation is what it is, but I also can see now because of the growth that we're experiencing, why that can be a challenge for, for staff and all the questions that you guys have. And so my only concern is there's a lot of projects that are going on right, or shouldn't say a lot, but there's one specifically that, that could take place fairly soon that probably would benefit this design review process if and when it takes place. So I, I guess I'm, I, I, I could wrap my arms around a hybrid approach. I, I think that that makes sense. To give some context of, to, to Councilwoman Strater, you know, there's, excuse me, Strater, Perro. There have been instances where the lack of this consistency or direction has elongated the process where if we had these design, you know, design review in place or standards in place, the process and in which this particular application would have gone forward, probably would have been less time. It would have been faster and then result not, don't know if it would have been better, but it certainly, we would have got to it much quicker. And, and when we're dealing with investors and, and, and those who are investing are downtown, that time is money. And so I, I, I can understand why this is on the forefront and I appreciate you guys putting it together. I, I, I could put my, started to ramble, but I guess what I'm saying is that the hybrid approach is probably something that I would be most interested in.
So I'm going to be the little odd man out this evening where to this point in time, I've not seen the challenge or the need for us to report. I'm not saying we can't have improvements, but I'm not bought into committees. Additional staff time effort. I would like to see an audience full of downtown business property owners, current developers, future developers. Telling me that this is a problem. I think I need to hear that personally from them to see what type of protections they're looking for or what type of things. And I'm not going to beat around the bush. We, we know we're talking about the project across the street that there was some initial design questions about, I don't, but it's not built. It may turn out to be a gem of our downtown and we're going through this conversation about what might be, what it might look like. You know, and I don't think that any of us know what it might look like well enough to make determinations that we need to create a brand new committee process, invest further. I'm not saying I'm not open to it. I'm just not convinced that there's enough data or comments that I've heard that this, taking these additional steps is warranted, needed, or is the process we should move forward. But that's, that's where I am today. I'm open to it, but I'm not convinced that this is the direction we should go.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I, I'm hearing you loud and clear and you're the mayor. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, if it's not something that you're, you don't have your arms wrapped around, I don't know if the, the ultimate buy-in is, is going to happen. However, with my role on MDC, you know, I, I, I've seen the process play out with the folks across the street and And I believe that something that staff is talking about probably would have helped out the process, honestly. I think that maybe getting buy in and in having folks. You know, interested parties giving feedback may make sense. And maybe what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Mayor, is maybe the totality of what staff is asking for, maybe you don't quite agree with and maybe further discussion is needed. Maybe is that what you're saying?
From my perspective, yes, but what I've tried to do is not impose my beliefs on what staff has limited to bring before council to get feedback. Perhaps there could be changes to the information that we provide that would get us far enough as compared to going in other directions, but I don't know that. But I've wanted there to be a conversation.
I get it. We had one. So, Mr. Mayor, so what what would be? What would be your recommendation? Maybe what are you looking for?
My recommendation at this point in time would be if planning wants to pull together a downtown stakeholder meeting to talk specifically about this issue with people currently, people that recently done a project, currently doing projects. And ones that we know are likely to come forward and have a conversation about what would, you know, again, protecting investment. Streamlining processes, setting expectations. And if they're also, yeah, and design review committee over in Boise is the way to go. Let's put our money into that bucket because they all love it so much and you get such great projects that are so beautiful over there out of that process. Sorry, I'm.
Mr. Mayor.
I feel like you're being a hairfish.
Just a hairfish, because I think we all understand that we, everything is subjective. I've told people this. I hate the Wells Fargo banking downtown boys, building in downtown Boise. I don't really like jump, but I have no issue with first security, which is nothing but the old first security, which is a tall building that's brown with glass with no articulation. It, that's me, you know, so it's it's so subjective when it comes down to what we like or don't like. Councilman Pro.
Thank you. So I'm also at that place of really understanding the root of this and the need. And the reason I'm asking for specifics, I don't, I don't have an expectation that you name specific projects. What I'm trying to gather is what would be the flags? What would be the gates? My assumption is, is the flag, the list of the things that will spur on a review by this, by a potential design committee. We've got to put together what those flags are. And I'm curious if staff has already done that. And I assume that the comments that have been received and the concerns that have been received and the applications that have gone through that that councilman burnt just mentioned that all of those things are what's going to help us put together this, these flags that we're going to be looking for. That that's the thing. Hey, when this, when this type of project happens, these are the concerns that have happened in the past. We need, we need to start there as to which projects would require the review versus saying, oh, all of them in old town designation are going to require review, right? So that's where I need that bridge gapped for me. And so there's that. The second thing I want to say is I know I'm very familiar with the overlays that Boise has in several of their districts. A lot of their neighborhoods in the older part of the city have overlays for this purpose. I know downtown does Sunset District does. And some of those overlays were requested and spurred by the neighbors themselves, by the the owners themselves. What what processes did they take to get those implemented? Was it their planning staff that went through that was whether consultants hired? Do you have any idea?
So, Mr. Mayor, again, kind of working backwards, that last one doesn't sound like either Brian or I know how those came to be in Boise. We can look into that. And if if we come back for part two of this discussion, we'll bring you that answer. Going back and and maybe even some more of this, and this actually ties in with the mayor's comments and bringing those stakeholders together. There are some potential flags that we've identified, but but to the mayor's point, we need to pull those people that are invested in our downtown to make sure the things we've heard are the things that are important, are the things that we want to protect. So we've got a list, but really the first step is to gather those folks and say, again, when when does something rise to the occasion of going through this extra process? Where is it? You got brick buildings all around you? Is it because you're on this road or that road? Is it? Is it locational? Is it specific to what are those? Is it two and a half times any building next to you? What? What are those triggers? So we've got a short list, but we want to hear from the people that own property and develop. Do we have that list right? And it's certainly not comprehensive at this point. It's just those initial kind of triggers that would say, okay, if this is present, yeah, we think maybe someone should look at that a little closer. So it's not fully baked, as Cameron would say, we don't have it all ready to propose to you here. This is what would trigger that. But again, is there anything or is it teach his own and we're just going to be spinning our wheels because you're going to like it and you're not. And we can't bring those folks together for consensus. And so what are we trying to even do? So again, we have at least, we didn't bring that tonight to say, here's, you know, this is when that would apply. But we could, if we want to have maybe do the stakeholder meeting, develop an initial list of here's triggers, if you will, that would say you go to some extra process. When you propose something in this location and again, we could even get in the location specific. So sorry, this isn't, doesn't have those details. We want to make sure this was, and again, it's a mixed bag, right? I mean, we've got, you guys are kind of all over the place with some that want to do maybe more and some that don't want to do anything. So I'm glad we're having this conversation. I do value this direction, even though I don't hear a whole lot of solid, this is, this is where we're going, but more to do.
Councilman Pro.
So directly with that, then Caleb, I I also would like to have that information before I'm comfortable saying, yes, we should proceed before we have conversations about consultants, before we have conversations about committing. About putting a architectural or design review committee together. I really I think there still needs to be some more understanding of the need for myself.
So, Mr. Mayor.
I hope that's clear enough.
And I think Councilman Hoagland had something too, but I just want to, I, I think we can probably take on that level of effort. And I'm gonna look at Brian, but only with one eye because he's going to glare at me. But that's part of this conversation, right? We don't have a whole lot of bandwidth to even start to. And what I'm afraid of is when we open up that can, we can't put it back in. And we're going to open it up. We're going to say, hey, what do you guys think downtown should look like? Can we come report that? And it's like, well, never mind, we aren't doing a project. What? You're not doing a project. You asked us to come and you asked for our feedback and it. I think once we kick this off, it's going to be hard to just say, never mind, we don't really want to do anything. So just be aware of that. We can do some of that. And I, again, I think in house, without going too far with a consultant or anywhere with a consultant, can start that conversation. But I don't know that we'll be able to press pause or not do a project if we really invite people to participate, even at that level.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Looks like we need part two, Caleb. I think that's what we need. And so I think that there's been some good discussion and some concerns and maybe a little bit of guidance. Maybe this can be hashed out. You know, with, you know, folks from the planning department, the mayor and council president, future council president, and just sort of have a decent idea of maybe what this looks like. And and dig a little bit deeper for part two.
I'm fine with that approach. I mean, it's, it is, Caleb let the cat out of the bag. Once people are involved and that it's that that train has left the station and it's a matter of, okay, where do we end up?
It left 45 minutes ago, just so we're clear, so.
But and that's why my question early on, though, about the design review committee in Old Town, because I think it has to be very specific to Old Town, possibly with stakeholders, with some involvement and knowledge of a special district that are engaged in that, that. And I have experience with Boise's way back when, when I worked for the mayor of design review and that process. But I also have that experience of when they decided what they were going to do, when the mall wasn't going to go downtown. And Merrickham Thornt said he's not going to let downtown die. And that collaborative effort that kicked off to make it what it is today, starting with that public plaza and then the auditorium down downtown Boise Center on the Grove. You know, we can do that same thing here. It's, it's not going to be as large, but it's very important. And and what we do now will be built upon for many, many years to come. So we do have to get it right. And we do have a place where it's not going to be on your shoulders because you're not, they're not, you guys will do your part, but we need some outside help. Just like we did in downtown Boise way back when to help make that a reality. And bringing in the stakeholders and other people who see this as a place that is a destination and something that we can be very proud of for this community. So I think we'll get there. We'll just have to work at it a little bit longer and make it a reality.
Oh, to be continued. So with that, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn on favor of saying bye bye, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, you guys have it. We are adjourned.
Pickleball with the guy. He's dragging you up. Coach there now.
When did you get, was he in the lab?
Got any of them, dude.
Council called the media org for the record. It is December 7th, 2021 at 6:05 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, Councilwoman Perro, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Hoagland, Councilman Burnt, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time, as a pledge of allegiance to be at all, please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is a community invocation, which will be given tonight by Pastor Eddie Hankey with Value Life Community Church. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Pastor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you. Thank you for the opportunity again to be praying for you and with you this evening. God, we thank you for the privilege of gathering in public to do the work and business of the city. God, we thank you that the city is not just leaders, but it's citizens. And I pray that tonight, as we hear from both, God, that you would give them a sense of cooperation and partnership in the work. God, we ask at this Christmas season that you would fill us with hope, with joy, and with love for our neighbor and for our city. We continue to ask us for your blessing upon those who work on the front lines during the pandemic. I got those in our hospitals. Those are emergency first responders. Got those in our classrooms. We ask ultimately, Father, that you be glorified by the city of Meridian in its work. And I ask these things on behalf of the council in Jesus's name. Amen. Bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Now we are to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
There are no changes to the agenda. So with that said, I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second, the motion.
Have a motion, a second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item ups, the public forum. Mr. Clark, we have someone sign up this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do. John Wheeler. And there is a handout in front of you that says public forum on that. Mr. Wheeler provided that.
This really, if you can say, I don't know, you'll be recognized for three minutes for comments.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Simison, members of the council, staff, members of the Bree community, and ladies and gentlemen of the public. My name is John Wheeler. I'm here representing the group at the Bree Village Apartment Community on North Records Way. That facility has been in operation now for just over a year. There are currently about 130 occupants in the building. When, when they get, when they get leased up, we should be at about, well, over, over 200. And further down the road to the north, there are now additional apartment complexes. We have the Regency at 370 units. We've got Vraso at 96. And we've got the Lofts at 36. So you can see the development that's taken place along there that has impacted the way that is now developing. It's, it's gotten a, it's gotten a field. It's very much residential in nature. As a, as a result of this development and the fact that we are fortunate enough to be directly across from the Kleiner Park, which is one of the more beautiful parks I've ever been in, leaves this situation on North Records Way in a situation where we've got some real concerns with traffic flow. If you look at the graphic that we have, and this is on page three of the letter also, but there's an overhead. You see on the right, you see the, that's the park. If I can get the mouse to settle down, that's the park across in what is really a dirt lot there right now. That's where the Bree building is at. Okay, the traffic situation comes about because of this. The, the parking lot that sits just to the south of the Bree building is really the, the largest off-site parking facility for that park. And so what happens is we've got car shows, festivals, family events, company events, high school events. That park is, is utilized by a lot of different groups and justly so because it's beautiful. And it's a great place to have these events. But the problem is when we have those events, that parking lot gets filled up. And the nearest crosswalks, if you go clear to the north, where I've now got it marked where River Valley comes in, River Valley Street comes into north, that's, that's where the crosswalk to the north is at. If you go clear down off the screen to the south, that's where the south crosswalk is at. So people parking in that, in that lot have to walk either a block north or a block south to get over to the park. And I can tell you from watching the traffic over the last year, that doesn't happen. What happens is they go directly across the street. And so you've got a lot of people dancing in and out of cars trying to get across that street safely. So it, it, I think has become a real concern.
And Mr. Wheeler, nine to three minutes goes by really fast. If you could just summarize your comments really quick, we do have your information in front of us and we will follow up with you.
Got it. I just, I just want to add quickly to it and say that what we're asking for is for the city to work, to recommend to the county group that we get some several things done. One, to re, get the speed limit reduced. And I know that's going to be an issue, but it's something that really needs to be studied. Number two, a radar sign of some kind to help slow people down to the speed because even at 30, they come much faster than that, especially on Friday and Saturday nights. Third, a crosswalk, and I've got this on the graphic, a proposed crosswalk that which would take people across, give them access to the park right across the north end of that parking lot. So instead of having to do a block either way, they can, they can cross right there. I think that would alleviate a lot of the traffic situation. Additional noise reduction, I'm sure that's not a surprise to you that, that noise is a problem. And we'd really like to work with you on resolving some of this. What we're coming forward tonight with is not a demand for something or no money or resources. What we'd really like to do is have you work with us to get the county to work on the things they need to work on. The cooperation of the police department's been excellent. And we really have enjoyed our, the ability to work with those folks, but they're limited. I mean, they've got manpower issues. And so we understand that. And we ask you to help us help them solve this traffic problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Hood. We'll have someone reach out to you, name Miranda, to have a conversation about some of these things is, and I'm sure the police department will also be part of those conversations. So look forward to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I assume we had nobody else on? Okay. Then with that, we will go right into our public hearings for this evening. First item is a public hearing for the community bill of broad grant CDBG program plan year 2020 consolidated action, consolidating annual performance evaluation report. So open this public hearing with staff comments. It's over to Crystal.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you said, it's basically a end of year report, which so HUD speak, the whole caper thing, it's just comes down to end of year report. Our program year 20 report covers October 20, October 1st, 2021, or 2020, sorry, this is my way, 2022, September 30th, 2021. So the caper, you had mentioned what it stands for. This is so that we can provide transparency to the public for the annual accomplishments and progress towards our overall consolidated plan goals. The goals are identified in our five-year consolidated plan, and we use our analysis of impediments to fair housing and the housing market analysis plus community engagement to figure out what those goals are for the five years. We are currently in the fourth, well, we're reporting on the fourth year of our 2017 through 2021 consolidated plan. And our goals for this con plan are to improve accessibility, enhance homeownership opportunities, provide social services, stabilize the rental gap, and provide admin and fair housing. For our goal of improving accessibility, Public Works installed or modernized 18 streetlights on walking routes to Meridian schools. And we had some other projects that we funded during the year, but this is the only one that was completed. For enhancing homeownership opportunities, we had two different projects. One was the homebuyer assistance project where we were able to help one household purchase a home in Meridian. And we also had our homeowner repair program that helped three households with repairs that were needed. This shows our progress towards our goals for our one-year goal for the homebuyers. This shows our progress towards our goals for our one-year goal for the Home Buyer Assistance Program. We had hoped to help three households, but with the housing market, we were only able to help one. And for the homeowner repair program, it was the first year, and we didn't really know what to expect. So they had set a goal of eight, and we were able to help three. So overall, for our five-year plan, our goal for all five years is 11, and in year four, we've hit seven. Our next goal is providing social services. We've had four projects that we worked on this year. Jesse Tree's Emergency Rental Assistance Program, Meridian Boys and Girls Club Scholarship Program, Mortgage Assistance Through Neighbor Works Boise, and Case Management through Terry Riley's Allenbaugh House. For this one, Boys and Girls Club and Jesse Tree, they both exceeded their goals. Allenbaugh House, they had anticipated that they would be able to serve more Meridian residents than actually came to them. So they ended up not renewing their contract, and they did not hit their goal. But they, they just served a lot more Boise people than they did Meridian. And Mortgage Assistance, that is a project that's still open. It's CARES Act funding, so it can go over multiple program years. For this one, our five-year plan was to serve a little over 2,000 people, and we've more than doubled that at this point. So this is a quick story from Jesse Tree. This is one of their successful participants. Her name's Amber, and she was sick with COVID-19. She ended up in the hospital and had an eviction notice, and she didn't know what to do. So she was referred to Jesse Tree, and they were able to provide her rental assistance and landlord mediation so that she wasn't able, or so that she was able to stay in her housing. And she said she was grateful to have a place to come back to after getting out of the hospital. Otherwise, she would have been on the street. We all need to help each other. Our goal of stabilizing the rental gap, I've mentioned it before, but this goal actually falls under Public Services, so we don't report the homelessness prevention and emergency rental assistance under this one. So it's not reported here because we already talked about that one. For our goal of admin and fair housing, this just keeps us in compliance and make sure that we spend the funding and that we are reaching our residents. So I will not read the whole thing on this one, but a quick little story from Boys and Girls Club on their scholarship program. They had a club member named Ryland, who was part of the scholarship program. And they noticed during the summer that he was eating all of his food and asking all of his friends for food. And one day, he grabbed his backpack, and it spilled out, and there was all this food that he had been asking for. So they asked him why he was hiding the food, and he said that he has a little four-year-old brother who didn't have enough food to eat, and so he was taking it home and keeping it for him. So they were able to get a backpack from their store and fill it up with food for him. And now they have it set up with him so that whenever he brings it back, he leaves it in his cubby, and they just go secretly grab it and fill it up with food. So that's one of the students that they were really proud of. So back to numbers, we were able to, we had $1.3 million to spend this year. Of that, 40% was the CARES Act funds, which is specific to COVID-19. And then we also had our annual funding for PY20, and we had a couple of projects that rolled over from PY18 and PY19. This is a breakdown of our expenditures. Oh, sorry. Administrative costs, we spent about 26,000, public services, 15,000. Housing projects were a little over 90,000. Streetlights and sidewalks were 228,000, and then CARES Act projects were 133,000. So with this, we have multiple projects that are continuing on. The Mortgage Assistance Program and the admin associated with the CARES Act funding. We also have a sidewalk project and a couple of streetlights projects. But then we had some projects that closed, and they didn't spend all of their funding. So this leaves us about $120,000 that we have to reallocate during this year. In our CAEPER, we also report on these activities. So for housing affordability, we focus on programs to purchase housing or remain in housing that is affordable to them. We also provide services to offset basic living expenses. For homelessness and other special needs, we collaborate with agencies that specialize in those areas, like Our Path Home, Behavioral Health Board, or Neighbors United. For public housing, we coordinate with the Ada County Housing Authority. And for our other actions, we have the Canida Collaborative, and we focus on fair housing and lead-based paint activities. We have some minor updates that you'll see on the final document next week on the consent agenda. It's basically around approving it. So it's public comments. If we receive any, then those sections will be updated, the public notice and a resolution before we send it to HUD. So one last story. I'm sure you all remember, we had record-high heat this last summer. And this lady, Margot, is one of our residents, and her AC went out. She's an elderly woman who had no AC on the 105 days. So Neighbor Works put together this quick little video. Oh, and there's no sound. Okay, so that's okay. So basically, she, she, all of her kids, her grandkids, they come to her house, and she had no AC. She went out to try and find somebody who could help her repair this because it was dangerously hot this summer, and she didn't have the money for it. And so she reached out to this program, and they were able to come and get her set up. And now she hasn't been having any problems. So she wouldn't necessarily have been able to remain in her housing that was affordable to her if she hadn't had this program there to help her out. Quick timeline for the remainder of the CAEPER. Our public comment period has been open from November 19th through tonight. We'll have a public hearing and then close that out. Next week, on the consent agenda, will be the final report and a resolution. And as soon as I get that, then I'll get it submitted to HUD. If anybody has any questions or comments, they can always reach me. We have a website, or you can reach me directly. With that, I'll stand for comments.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Crystal?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal, for being here. You know that this is near and dear to my heart. Housing affordability, concerns with the condition of homes. I really had hoped, not only with this past year, but in the five-year plan, that there would have been an opportunity to help more families, especially with the mortgage assistance and the assistance to the repairs of the homes. And I understand from meeting with Neighbor Works and chatting with you and a few other folks that some of the impediments to it, it's not just cost of housing, but it's what the income limitations are for, that are set by HUD. Is that right? And so some of the programs, as they're administered by Neighbor Works, for example, the funds are there to use, but there's other limitations that are being created by agencies outside of ourselves and outside of Neighbor Works and Jesse Tree and all the organizations that are administering these programs. Can you help us understand, and is there anything that we as a city can do to work through some of those impediments? Because the funds are there, and they're just not getting utilized every year.
So the purpose of this grant is for low-to-moderate-income households. And right now, we're in an interesting situation just because of the entire housing market, and nobody has money to buy a house at this point. I shouldn't say nobody, but for the most part, it's really hard to find a house that isn't sold out from under you, that doesn't have a cash offer and you can afford. So I wouldn't be able to purchase the home that I'm in right now if I was to try and go out and get it at this point. So right now, again, it's a bit of an interesting situation. However, in general, these funds are specific to help people who are potentially in the circle of poverty so that they can get out of that. So while it would be nice to help everybody, this is really focused because there's other resources that are available to people with higher incomes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Question, just curious. Could we take the CBDG funds and instead of doing individual assistance, could we put that toward a housing affordability fund or some type of a mechanism that's able to be used to build more affordable, maybe multifamily units or something that's more accessible for people? I'm just curious if that's possible under the way that funding works.
CDVG actually, at this point, can't be used to build housing. So we could use it towards soft costs and different things. But if we start putting it into construction, we also have to pay prevailing wages, and Davis Bacon kicks in, and so it makes the project much more expensive. And so a lot of people don't want to get CDVG funds involved in those programs. But in our next con plan, we are looking at ways that we can get more involved in housing affordability so that we can help people out a little bit better.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate the follow-up in, as you're creating your long-term plans, you know, to try to think more, maybe out of the box, or maybe bring us choices, maybe options we haven't considered before. So I appreciate you working on that. It's just hard. It's frustrating to see. I'm sure Councilwoman Perrow's concerned, and it's very hard to see, like, we have all this funding, but we've helped one family, right? When we know there are so many people that are struggling to access any kind of affordable housing here. We're trying to continue to build housing. It's a struggle. So, thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come to the podium at this time now and do so, or if you're online and would like to provide testimony, please use the raise-your-hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting to provide testimony. Seeing nobody coming forward or raising their hand, do we want to leave the public hearing open, or do we close it out? Okay, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Close the public hearing on the Community CDVG Program Year 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Second, that motion.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. Okay, we'll see you back next week. I have two on the agenda. There's a public hearing for the Field Subarea Plan, H2021-0047. We will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn this over to Caleb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Brian pulls up the presentation for this evening, just a little bit of an introduction. So you know who I am, Caleb Hood, Planning Division Manager. Brian will be doing most of the presentation. We'll also have Megan Moore from Logan Simpson on the phone. So if any questions arise, she is hopefully on standby. Clark just left his station, but I believe she's there too. So this project sort of, or unofficially started in late 2019, just after our comprehensive plan was adopted. So I can't believe it, but this next week, our con plan will be two years old. So we officially kicked off this project, though, with Logan Simpson. And it's been over a year ago. And again, they've helped us do this process to develop the subarea plan. You'll hear about tonight. Go to the next slide, please. Are you okay, Mr. Mayor, if I stay here and give the presentation, or do you want me to come to the podium where you guys are?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. So just a little bit of a brief history. Again, in 2019, kind of at the conclusion of that, staff brought to council some next steps with to implement the comprehensive plan. And this was one of those high-priority projects that were identified, and that the blessing from council will go forward. And that was through the community effort outreach and really saw a lot of opportunity in this area particularly to guide development. And so here's, on the screen, is the most recent application history. But again, this history is longer certainly than this past spring. But this past spring, when Brian was discussing this project with council and getting some of that direction, level of effort came up repeatedly. Council directed staff and the consultant to do our best to ensure that this was a balanced area of the city by maintaining adopted service levels, and if possible, to raise the bar in the process through collaboration. And I hope that comes through in this presentation tonight, that we have reached out to the stakeholders out here, worked to make this plan, a plan that I'm proud of, that I can see being implemented and really create a special district out here in the field. So I know Brian's going to spend some more time with you in a few minutes to really get into how we've done that with the implementation in particular for this, the plan and the steps there. So we did have two public hearings, as you can see on here, September 16th, and then we came back on October 10th at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, at that October 10th meeting, they did recommend to you approval of the amended plan. So there were some changes that were made. In your packet, you do see those underlined straight through comments. I know Brian is prepared. If you want to go there, line by line, we can do that, but really not the intent tonight. So just a quick outline of the rest of the presentation. So again, I'm going to do this quick introduction, and then Brian will cover the background, briefly describe the process, the plan, implementation, go over the request, and then we'll take some questions. So the introduction piece, again, the Field Subarea Plan is a direct continuation of the 29 comprehensive, 2019 comprehensive plan. That's a staff application for a city project. So staff is the applicant in this situation. The subarea plan was a high priority for council. It's intended to put a finer point on understanding and planning for services and community context, given the unique conditions, opportunities, and needs in the area. The application before you tonight is a conference point text amendment. The proposal would be to add this new document to the list of adopted plans and studies by reference. That is on page C and D of the comprehensive plan, right up front in that document. So it'll be listed right there with the 10-mile specific area plan. The actual text amendment itself is just the one line. It just says, "Add this document." The document isn't anywhere else in the plan, just a reference point. It's adopted by addendum. There are no future land use map provisions, and that's pretty important. There was some concern about that, or again, this does not change the future land use map. This puts a finer point on those existing land use designations. Densities and more specific uses are generally driven by the previously adopted plan, which had that significant public outreach. So the last point on this slide is we're not proposing to annex any properties or any new development with this application. Any future proposed development would go through the typical process of applying to the city hearings before the Planning, Zoning Commission, most likely, and City Council on their own. So where are we at? This is northwest Meridian, is northwest as it gets four square miles. So this slide gives you that geographic context. On left, obviously, is more our region. And then on the right is the four square miles that we're talking about, minus a little bit of the area near Eustick-McDermott intersection, future State Highway 16. The Intermountain Gas, liquefied natural gas tank is called out here for context, as it's literally a big deal. The Williams Pipeline runs just past this and ties into that LNG tank. You can see in the gray area, which is an industrial designation. And then basically at a 45-degree angle, that pipeline runs and provides natural gas to most of the northwest United States. The Candy Stripe Line near McDermott is a future State Highway 16. So that's just more for reference that, you know, to split off from McDermott. Basically, McDermott will become a baggage road, basically, the future State Highway 16. So a little bit of context there. And we'll only have crossings at Eustick, Chindon, McMillan, and for the Five Mile Creek. Construction of State Highway 16 now has funding identified, and the state is rapidly progressing towards construction, but we'll talk about that another time. Star Road also has a river crossing as planned for five lanes. ACHD will be making some bridge enhancements in their near future. Parks is coordinating with ACHD to explore and improve grade-separated underpass for the Five Mile Creek path, and you all have been engaged on that topic by Parks in the past. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of context, hopefully, of the area, geographical area we're talking about this evening. That's the intro. Hopefully teed up for Brian to get a little bit more into the details of what the plan is and what we plan to do with it. And like the previous one, I would stand for any questions before I pass the rest of the time over to Brian.
Councilman Borton.
Yeah, just kind of one high-level question. Caleb, did you feel in the work that it was, it was constrained by the future land use map, and the ultimate uses must fit within it? Or did any of the work lead you to think we should change it, but we chose not to?
It's a fair question, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton. It's a fair question. We did work within the context of really trying not to change the land use designations. We were, that's really, we tried to stay true to that. There were a couple of conversations, I think, where that came up, and we were pretty, I'll let Brian speak for himself, but a little defensive of it. But at the same time, I don't know that if there were something that really justified a change, I wouldn't be shy about proposing that to you either. So I don't, yes, we did go kind of with that, again, defensive kind of mode over what we had here. But I didn't hear anything through this process that meant to say, you know what? I think we screwed it up, and we should maybe change the map. So hopefully that helps.
I brought that forward.
Would have, I would have daylighted that and said, you know what? We got it wrong. We should change something.
Council, anything else for Caleb?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just because you've highlighted the LNG tank several times, and it's quite large, and a critical piece of info.
And a critical piece of infrastructure. I assume that whatever transition is necessary for safety reasons and buffering and all that has been studied as part of how we came up with the original land uses here, but I just want to make sure that's been part of the consideration in the history to date.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader. Yes, to some degree. And when you say study, I guess it's not a scientific study so much as we did sit down with the inter mountain gas folks and talk to them about that and kind of some worst case, what if types of things? And from their perspective, what would be good land use planning? I won't use some of their vernacular. Some of the words they used were a little. But yes, what you see on the map and just the topography and the lay of the land with some of the water features also create natural buffers or transition areas to that. I think the the call out there on the screen is pretty accurate. So you do have about a thousand feet or so around it, which is what they recommended as a a buffer area, I'll call it. So we didn't, again, to answer your question more directly, we didn't study it, study it. We didn't hire somebody to go and say, well, what happens? If there is a catastrophe there, but based on what they told us in that situation. That's why we're comfortable with these land uses that are here.
Mr. Mayor.
Council, Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, thanks for highlighting that. I think no different than with our public works and our wastewater recovery facility. You know, you, we have the experts at Inter Mountain Gas to advise us regarding their views on appropriate buffer, but I guess I'd be curious what resources are available to further study that. I don't know that we have to. I don't want to take us down a total rabbit hole on this tonight. It's obviously a critical piece of infrastructure and just important that there's not a quick buffer. So hopefully we won't be seeing an application like next week with a medium high residential property right next to it because I just don't know if I'd be comfortable yet based on that information. So that's all. It's just a concern. Thanks.
Council, any additional questions at this time?
Mayor and council, since some of this work has been ongoing in council awareness on some of this may vary, we'll be going over some background additional context. Some of which we just covered. Planning work has been occurring for going on two decades now. There it was formally added to the city's area of impact in two thousand eight by Ada County. Line uses assigned at this time were generally considered interim. And as a result, there are multiple studies and white papers. Multiple local and regional working groups to look at potential economic activity and patterns of development. And there have been quite a few design shreds and visionary exercises. None of this unfortunately coless coalesced into anything and it's frankly caused a lot of confusion in the area. The city began to solidify plans in two thousand seventeen with work around the inter mountain gas facility and Williams pipeline. And as part of a future line use amendment at that time. The Williams pipeline is a twenty four inch thirty mile long natural gas pipeline that traverses much in Meridian. It is a connection to the inter mountain liquefy natural gas tank south of Big Bill and just west of the Phyllis Canal. The city does have separation requirements codified in the unified development code for the pipeline. Seven million gallon inter mountain gas tank is filled with natural gas that has been chilled to liquid state. This is just for your information. According to the US Energy Information Administration, liquefy natural gases about negative two hundred sixty degrees Fahrenheit and six hundred times smaller than the gash gas form. The photo here is a desk earlier this year. There's a red combine for reference. Highlighted. The tank does need a one thousand foot non residential safety buffer, which falls outside their property. And there are some other offsite impact considerations such as light, noise and connectivity. While seasonal and event based. While seasonal and event event based neighbor comments have indicated the why he sport lighting out there now is brighter. Another obvious influence in this area are development pressures. The construction of why a why he high school has brought a new level of this. This is challenges as we don't currently have adequate fire service and our police officers have long travel times. Utility infrastructure is inadequate. We need some major improvements to sewer to include a new left station on McDermott. State Highway sixteen is still undergoing designers uncertainty with construction impacts and ultimate phasing. Lastly, there's no neighborhood services and many there's likely to be of interest earlier are not necessarily in the best location to have the best community or long term value. Short term demands and decisions may be the biggest threat to the area long term. And finally, as previously mentioned, the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan was a huge basis for much of the background and context for this plan. Identified the future line uses for the area and the need for more integrated development patterns and service planning. The background information here is all context and history for the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan. We have had questions on it though, and casual why not top comment, why not type comments by P and Z and others that did not participate. And so some of the coverage may be useful reminder for others. During the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, bill that analysis was considered for neighboring cities, citywide allocation corridor analysis and sub area planning. The fields area was one of several dedicated focus areas during that time. Most of the Jason original regional land uses are mixed use. In today's market and away from the highway, that's likely largely be residential with linear commercials along the frontages. In Meridian and of late, the next best use when commercials reach saturations multi family. Star has actually been looking to pair back commercial uses due to viability. You can see this in Meridian. We get comments that think Shinden, for example, should all be a commercial. But most of it is in fact residential. Limited access requires non residential to be focused and there's no reversal on the Amazon effect inside. Employment opportunities in the fields area are focused in the southwest and northeast and then the neighborhood center at the middle. In the right context and conditions, these could all have an opportunity to specialize in different markets or uses. They could, but they don't have to. The reminder parks and open space are also important for context. We've had this conversation with council several times, but I'll summarize. Despite best efforts by our parks and recreation department, the city has not been getting on its service goals. The fields area in particular has no previously acquired previously acquired or dedicated land. The board property and cherry discovery on Lake Hazel and to a lesser degree, the Aldapi property along the river are all areas the city has been proactive in planning for city park space. Prior to development coming, we don't have anything like that out here. The city didn't expect the high school. There's an increase in development pressure due to it. State Highway sixteen is coming. And there just hasn't been a good offer or opportunity to get ahead of it out here. Dash circles around the green blobs in the map are either existing or planned park sites. Not only is there nothing even remotely walking distance to the fields area. And the existing parks are even driving distance when considering the amenities at them. Their neighborhood and community parks within other developments. Settlers Park is six miles from Star McMillan. With some important background covered, briefly review the process. As reiterated, this work has made use of and further recent efforts. This has led to some challenges and opportunities. It's challenging because newer stakeholders and those that did not participate previously sometimes wanted to talk about previous steps. It's an opportunity because it allows us to focus on the elements that we really wanted to any cared about. Usually we just got asked a lot of roadway questions, but it was still good conversation. The consistent feedback through all this for the city was on the pathways, connectivity and a distinct community thematic. This was great as it aligns with cities previous efforts and feedback, which has been memorialized in the comprehensive plan. For this project, we began with small group interviews in person and online. The focus of these meetings was concerns and opportunities and included partner agencies, city staff, development and financing professionals and key stakeholders, those nearest neighborhood center. After some initial direction and impression work and impression work, the project team moved on to an online workshop. This using interactive cool tool called mural. The technology is still a little rough for those not tech savvy. But worked well. All property owners in the fields were notified and invited to participate. The focus was still on the neighborhood center, but included broader visual preference polling and discussion. Prior to submitting for public carrying, the city notified all previous participants and invited them to review and comment on a draft. This utilize a public comment tool equivalent to marking up a PDF in Acrobat, but available to all and publicly visible. After submitting for public hearing, we again notified all property owners of the project and process and shared the project website with links to the final draft and the project folder on the public record system. Staff have also considered continued to meet with engaged stakeholders throughout this process. Thankfully, despite the large area and constant changing ownership, there are not a lot of unique properties, property owners in the area. This slide won't do the mural tool justice, but there's a few snapshots here of sort of what that looks like. You can see notes and mouse cursors and silly drawings. That was the background process. So transition into the plan and the vision specifically. The purpose of the plan is to ensure that the fields area implements a vision of the comprehensive plan and is vibrant, self sufficient and distinctly Meridian. All the unique location, specific circumstances and challenges in the area are opportunities when consistently channeled and further within the context of the sub area plan. Said in other way, the sub area plan is about the relationship and integration of uses and with a key focus on the central neighborhood center for services, place making and general sense of community identity. In some ways, this is a service plan. How do we get people to the services they want? In a way that limits your exposure from regional transportation burdens. We want to preserve community by insulating residents from stakeholders from regional traffic. Especially when they'll be cut off by limited access freeway. Only a large part of this plan is how we do this and most of that comes down to opportunities, partnerships and of course money. The fees feels sub area plan includes four chapters with an intro overview of the public process, a planner vision and implementation. The vision includes elements of transportation, parks, pathways, economic development, character and a focus on the neighborhood center. The graphic here will be discussing some changes later. So please make a note of that. Also, the red layout line shown here is the Star McMillan Center. This mixed use community area in feature of it on the next slide. There's been some confusion over there, I think. So I just want to highlight the the boundaries of that. It's it's very small in the context of the rest of the of the planning areas. When I show you the next slide, just remember it's that little area on this map. The center and surrounding medium high density residential is just a small element of the larger area. But that said, a lot of the implementation and action items that make the feel successful are centered around this key intersection. Implementation is focused on priorities, city participation and action items. Again, the map here is a very small portion of the larger fields area stars on the west, a why he storm boulevard on the east and McMillan on the north. The Star McMillan Center is at the heart of the plan. It's central to the area accessible but insulated from highways and distinctly Meridian that star in Napa. Intended to be iconic and to have a unique destination identity designed accessible for locals, but attractive to everyone else too. Makes use of the city's pathway network and especially the five mile creek pathway. And this will have one of the few crossings as Killa mentioned for state highway sixteen with an underpass. This concept includes a main street style that provides more opportunities for destination uses and place making as there is prime for partnerships and synergies. Not just with the pathway network and linear open space, but also to realize locational benefits from a potential future city park. A characteristic here is the east west alignment to make best use of best use of access to McMillan. The access points near Star McMillan intersection will be limited or at least not as efficient and the creek interferes with full access on star. While a park or other destination use may be may support a fully realized neighborhood center sooner. It has the opportunity to be self sufficient long term. And I mean that this neighborhood center. The vision is that many of the services residents may normally have to drive to can be accessible without getting onto an arterial roadway or crossing congested state highways. Really just want to leave that point with you. A lot of thought went into how this can work. If you look at local areas like Bound Crossing or the thirty six street bistro on Hill, they've had problems. A combination of shortcomings, including a lack of external access, local community access, visibility, essential use anchors, public amenities, programming, competing areas and rooftops have led to issues. The project team looked at neighborhood center success stories and retail trends. There's going to be a strong demand for local local demand in the future and the river crossing and start and overpass on Meridian. This area will have high visibility and traffic. The center itself will also be a destination draw. Won't go into the names, but the the team looked at a variety of cities and examples all over the place. This is an illustrative look and fill sketch. This isn't prescriptive by any stretch of the imagination. But it does include many a sense of place and focus elements and stakeholders have commented on. Here's a few other images that I've received positive feedback for looking for elements. These are all in the plan. It was a given the context, a quick summary of the core element of the vision. Next is implementation. This is just a brief reminder, but this plan is really is really the framework for next steps. As discussed, we have some big topics to understand and some of our service planning areas not in line with its standards and expectations. When I was last before council, we had two conversations on level of effort. The marching orders we walked away with were to do our best and show there's a balance area of the city. That third bullet down. To quite frankly, maintain service levels despite a late start and if possible to raise the bar. Also want to ensure we're fully transparent here. I'm planning to spend a few more minutes on implementation and next steps. The first big next step is identifying and working towards public open space, a park likely regional nature, but smaller than others of that class. As case as conceptualized, the park could be about forty five acres, but really it's flexible. Shown here has great visibility and access has amazing opportunities for synergies with the neighborhood center and is integrated onto the five mile creek pathway. There's no defined way predefined way to do this. The city isn't on the hook for anything financially and there's no timeline. But adopting this plan will create an expectation that we actively and genuinely try. It's an affirmation to our and our commitment to our service centers and to keeping this area distinctly Meridian. Access around the community centered parks and pathways are a core component of that. The other big element here is the city's pathway network and specifically the five mile creek pathway. Linear open space along the ten mile center is quite frankly game changing. This isn't a ten foot pathway bordering weeds without shade or other amenities. But true linear open space is place making and identity activated activity, increased station issues, destination draw to support commerce and it's public open space until we have a park. Statement was littered with cliche statements, but it's also true. We've had come, we've had more comments on this type of feature and what this does for neighborhoods and destination opportunities than any other element of the plan. Won't dwell here, but here's some other highlights for action items in the plan. That was a long short recap of a long project that really has been going on since the comprehensive plan in two thousand eighteen. Requested action before councils awkwardly disproportionate to the content and the next test, but here you have it. Comprehensive plan text amendment is to add this plan to the adopted reference. The comprehensive plan section. The findings in the staff report describe why this sub area plan is consistent with the doctor adopted comprehensive plan and helps to implement it. Since staff submitted the plan for public carrying, there were a number of proposed changes to the draft document. Those were consolidated in a city council memo sent on November night or twenty ninth, all of which were recommended by the planning and zoning commission. I'm not proposing to walk through those, but I have slides and I'm happy to do so. I can do that slowly. Or take specific questions and skip ahead, any of which is at your direction.
You done, Brian?
I'm done unless you want me to walk through them slowly. Or specifically.
Counsel, what's your desire? I I think we will head into questions from now. If we if the questions lead to more walkthrough, we'll go into deeper walkthrough. How about that? So council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I know our goal is not to go through the specifics of the field area plan. And it is to to just discuss adding it to the comp plan. I do have a question regarding the areas that are designated as retail or commercial mixed use. If you look at the field plan itself, just isolated. You might think that that is enough and 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 I actually looked at the breakdown of acreages that are dedicated to each use. Might seem like that is enough to service all of that residential around. But my anticipation is is that you're going to have individuals coming from Napa, from star and folks that are getting off of highway sixteen. So people coming potentially from Emmett. And all over the place that that are going to come to this area. Was there a discussion on whether this amount of mixed use is satisfactory to service? All of those individuals visiting from outside of who might live in the fields area plan. So for example, Bow and Crossing in Boise. I think that was intended to be very much specific to that community and the residential in that community. But instead you have folks that are going out to Barbara Park from other parts of the valley. You have folks that are coming in from Harris Ranch. There's a lot of other vehicles and then that street ended up becoming a cross through to go from Boise Avenue to Park Center. And so that area where I think it was originally intended to be a nice little community, a neighborhood. You know, commercial district ended up turning into really significant location that people were coming to visit. So is that what is intended here? Is that was that thought through as part of this? All of that potential outside visitation or is or are these areas really intended just to serve the residences in the fields area?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, councilperson Pro. Yes. So we did consider all of that. It is.
It is assumed and unlikely necessary that we'll have to. I mean, that's one of the reasons for the for having a park across the street. Besides just being supporting these residents, it creates a draw that supports the commercial uses. We need that to be successful and it will will rely and and demand frankly, visitors from outside the area to support it. We're also not trying to compete with all of our adjacent cities for some of those uses. They've got a lot more mixed use tripped out already than we do and they're going to be realizing a lot of this competing uses. That are frankly going to be easier and more desirable for some of the development that we're not supporting in here. So you don't see a lot of opportunities for a ton of drive throughs and banks and some of those automotive oriented uses within this area. Because. That's not what the core is for here. It's for the neighbors and for and for destination uses. It's not for those convenient uses for outside residents. Those those can all happen in plenty of areas, northwest, south. And then a few of the mixed use areas within Meridian on Shinden and then Eustick. So I don't know how well I answered the question for you, but yes, we did consider it absolutely. And I think we view having sort of tourism as as being very important to the to the neighborhood center.
Counsel, any additional questions? That's one trader.
Maybe not a question, but just. To like highlight two areas for me that are probably the. Biggest question marks that I think you you maybe have highlighted. So. I think one of the biggest questions is how do we make sure we get a park out here? Because a park is the key to making this work. It's not going to be nearly as wonderful of an area if we don't have that. So I guess I'd be curious, you know, if we did a an improvement CID improvement district or some other of the formulations we've talked about. What would be the phase? How would that work from a timing and steps perspective? Or do you have a, you know, recommendation in terms of how to approach the part? I mean, I know we're using a lot of our impact fees and so forth on other projects, so I'm just trying to think out loud. But to me, I I do see the biggest obstacle is the park. And then I do think we should put a little bit more into. Around the LNG tank. And. Doesn't mean that we have to have like an extensive study of it, but I'd like at least some sort of a. Worst case scenario, maybe in partnership with the owners. To figure out what, just to double check that that's an appropriate buffer. That is a concern for me. Feel like we need to really do, you know, make sure we're checking everything on that one. Just because of the safety concerns. So those are my two. I think we're going to solve them right now, but these are the two things I'm seeing as major things to figure out.
Maybe I'll take the first one because maybe I got it wrong, but to me, if if the council says we're going to a park, then that gets put into your impact fee. Next time you update your impact fee and start collecting dollars for it. That's the general approach that you would take for this and. That's what you do. It has become part of the calculation. So if that the end result might be your impact fees go up, if that's how you decide to fund it. You know, the other option could be, as was discussed, it was a CID, but maybe I'm missing something in terms of that process.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
I mean, certainly to the extent that there's a charitable landowner in that area that wants to donate land for a park. You can listen to this meeting. That's always an option. We've, we've had very charitable people donate land for parks in the past. That's been a successful approach to accelerating development. In the absence of that, I guess I'm curious for the CID specifically how that would work. If we didn't use our normal impact route, I'm just concerned with the land prices out here and the timing is all. How to make sure that that part happens seems really important.
Well, I think, at least from my perspective, I think that comes as development sees what you want. It's staff working with them to try to help make that happen or set aside land or get a donation or. Have the ability to make a purchase or I mean that that's kind of how it, to my knowledge, it happens. Being sometimes, yeah, we've gone out well before a plan is there and bought land in the past. But to me, that's kind of like what, you know, in South Meridian. And basically you work with people to get what you wanted through that process, but there's no guarantee. At the end of the day, we don't own the land and I don't think we want to talk about how the city could try to. Force it. That's not what we're talking about. It's not been the history. So you hope that people respect the plan and work with you on the plan.
Mister Mayor.
Brian.
Counsel one, one of the, one of the ways to get there from my perspective is to adopt the plan. And I know you're looking for more information, but having this on the record is something that we can, we can consider with the comprehensive plan and with annexation is a drum we can beat. And there's a variety of opportunities in there from from impact fees to CID's and and other options frankly. But it's difficult to say we have to have this or this area is it may be ready for growth. Without having something to comprehend the plan, it says we really need a park out here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Scherer.
So I guess my my question that I would pose back to you would be. Do you think there's more work that can be done prior to any annexations to give us comfort about the LNG? Tank and the adequacy of the buffer around it. At what point would you provide counsel with? Information on on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll, I'll try to answer your question, but maybe not as direct as you'd like. We can have more of a conversation, but let me even just step back for a minute. And Brian had it actually in one of the slides, wasn't too long ago, that property was actually designated low density residential. And so we actually did a process to say, at least let's call it the LNG plan as being industrial and it's not going anywhere. So we we kind of took that baby step and and even at that time, that's when we engaged with intermountain gas and we said, hey. Are you guys okay with us at least changing your property to industrial? And by the way, you know, we're going to do this new comp plan and we're probably going to look at changing some land uses around you. Again, not a study and I'm not trying to sell it as a study, but that outreach and what's appropriate for the thousand foot buffer. And I don't know if you caught it too, but one of the concepts that we've got actually shows the park, some of that forty five ish acre park. Also providing some of that buffer area. So. You know, again, in house, we don't have anybody that can do an official scientific study that says this is exactly how much you need as a buffer. But but we, we, we can drum up some of those old, the information we receive from them and provide some of that to you. And and maybe even talk to some other subject matter experts that are out there and and whatnot. And hopefully that gives you some level of comfort with that. I guess the other thing that hopefully provides you a little bit level of comfort is this is on the outer edges of what would be eligible for annexation in the near future. So OYHE High School today is the edge of city limits. And so you're in a mile, mile and a quarter mile and a half. Away before that that property wouldn't be even be eligible for annexation. So short of, and there are some large landing hold land holdings in this area. So don't get me wrong. It's not like we have a whole bunch of time to wait. But that property is not even properties that are adjacent to LNG facility won't be submitting subdivision applications tomorrow. Because they just city limits and services are still a ways away. So again, I know that doesn't. And and I can, I mean, if if you, if we find some money and you want us to go hire a consultant to say, you know, what is? What is the the buffer and someone stamps it? This is exactly what I'd recommend you approve for a buffer from the LNG plant. We can, we can look into that. I don't have a problem doing that. I'm pretty confident though, just with the. Subject matter experts we've talked to and the stakeholders that this is an appropriate buffer. But I don't say that to try to sell you on on that necessarily, just that that's what we've done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Scherer.
Yeah, and I'm sorry because I didn't really identify this as like, I wish, I wish I would have identified this earlier as a key concern. So I can give you a heads up, but the more we talk about it, I don't feel like the buffer has been independently validated in any way. And we have a consultant that we've hired to help create this plan. Perhaps they have an expert that they would recommend, or perhaps we could consider some amount of additional money towards studying it. I don't think it has to be an extensive study, but I personally wouldn't be willing to roll the dice on. Completely implementing the plan if we didn't have some kind of validation about that, just because. If it didn't work out, if there was an accident, it sounds like it could be catastrophic.
My 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 guess is that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has a standard for distance aside. I mean, I'm guessing that there's a federal standard for recommended distance that we could look at. Fairly easily to determine if this number is adequate or not.
Mister Mayor.
Counselor Scherer.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. That sounds like something that definitely should exist. So if someone could follow up. With that info, but that's just a concern that I have.
So Brian, one of the questions I had from, can you go back to one of the drawings of the more. That would take into the area north of OYHE High School, so on the larger side. Just the the land uses versus some of the applications that are currently moving forward. Out there, is it an alignment? In your viewpoint, does it? Yeah, I don't know where it is in the application process. We have, if we have an app, active application with the property north of McMillan. Which is currently viewed as residential. I know schools are allowed to go anywhere from that standpoint. But does it impact what we're viewing out in this area? Is it because not necessarily shown the same way the existing civic school is on this land on this map?
Mister Mayor, that's a, that's a good question. I'm, I haven't thought about it. We've taught, we 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 are very much aware of that application and intend to put this school there. It's something that hasn't caused us any heartburn. It's frankly, there's going to be another school out here as well that hasn't yet been identified specifically. And so we don't know where that one's going yet either. The only civic you see is for one elementary and one high school there. You're probably going to have another elementary school somewhere. It could be, it could be north of Shinden or it could be actually in Napa. But it'll, there'll probably be another one out here somewhere. We haven't identified that one yet either. So. It's. Status quo to sort of have a park go in a residential area and then those rooftops just sort of migrate somewhere else. Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Counselor Holgon.
Mister Mayor, I recall when the Fields District came about and I was on council before and Mayor Tammy was. You know, we were talking about this concept of having egg research and having the rural character retained and whatnot and. And that didn't go anywhere. It 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 was a good idea, but it's just a different use that's that's going to occur. But at the same time, you you did have a table in 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 your report that talked about kind of a summary of acreage. And how much that would be and and then later on, though, I think in talking with other stakeholders, that has kind of. Gone away from that of trying to identify this amount, but. You know, the low density portion, there, there are still areas of our our community that it makes sense to have low density and more open space. It's not going to be everything, but as based on the future land use map and whatnot. Is that something that can be flexible and we could increase that if demand is there? I mean, it is more difficult now with the price of land and cost of housing that. It's 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 it has changed and and high density and medium high density is is more the option. But how how does, I I guess, kind of walk me through the flexibility of kind of changing some of these? Things as warranted. I mean, we're we're trying to determine, you know, the market and you've talked to stakeholders who are are definitely invested in in these areas. But how how does that process work if we want to expand low density, for example?
Mister Mayor, councilperson Holgon, that's a good question. The plan has a number of pretty specific references to if changes occur. Changes will occur. When they happen, I don't know, but I'm I'm sure there will be some market pressures at some point to do that. It's careful to say, please consider the the impacts of that. It's not just the market pressures that occur on this site. What does that do overall? What's the transportation impacts look like? How's your overall balance of uses overall change? Not on, not on that property, but overall where we at and are we still healthy? So the request in the plan is to not just consider one off changes, but understanding cumulative impacts as they occur throughout the area. And frankly, citywide, because citywide, this is part of a citywide allocation and we want to make sure that we have a robust. Diversity of line uses that the result and outcome we want. So. Yes, it supports changes. It just asks that you please understand what those changes look like, not just for that property owner, but in a larger context.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping. So what you're saying, Brian, what I heard it was that, yes, there can be some movement. But that would go through a process and and staff would report, here's, you know, the request and that would eventually come back before us likely for. That decision on are we going to have changes to the land use map and. And and zoning and comprehensive plan changes. So that process is is what we would follow. Is that correct?
I I hope so, yes. Mister Mayor, if you don't mind, can I put a maybe a finer point on that? And this goes citywide. This isn't just for the fields area. I mean, we do have a process. I I will just, not not as a counterpoint, but almost to Councilman Borton's question earlier. Staff is pretty defensive out the gate with the land use designations we have here. Counsel has gotten it from stakeholders coming to meetings when people want to change that. I bought my property assuming that was going to develop this way or that way. And so we take it very seriously. When someone proposes to change the map. That said, you can apply, but we put the onus to justify that change on the applicant. And that's where we start with with applicants is you better bring your A game to show why it's in your, not only in your best interest, but in the community's best interest. And there are could be trickle down effects to other properties and and traffic and schools and all those things. So again, they really need to provide that justification if they want staff support and hopefully planning and zoning and council support to change the map. But yes, it can and does change over time and it's case by case, but we do look at it then holistically, almost with those tables to say, okay, well. We're going to add more low density. What's the impact or likelihood that we can now support these commercial services? Or vice versa, adding more commercial, where are the rooftops that are going to support the commercial? I don't want to dwell on that too much, but that actually almost ties in a little bit with Councilman Strater's concern. The plan before you doesn't change any of these land use designations. They are already adopted. The plan, again, I'm hope I'm not repeating too much, really defines how we want to get there. The implementation to see this plan, but our society changes and things will change and. I'm not that delusional or I think all of these land uses that you see on the screen, that's exactly how it's going to develop out.
Mister Mayor.
Counselor Holgon.
Yeah, that was well stated, Caleb. Thank you for that. I have one other question and that gets back to, we talk about transportation and. How how things flow and whatnot and 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 we're going to have a state highway that's going to be. I think the word was freeway, basically, that's going to be coming through there at at some point in time. But it's still interesting that star because we have a river to the north, it it has a bridge and that makes it a major corridor in and of itself. And will remain so. And so. And and when you, if you keep going south on Star, you end up at Franklin where you have major industrial, you have an Amazon facility, employees, lots of people. Cheese factory, you've got major industrial going on in that whole area. So and and things will develop to the north and and it's going to remain a pretty significant arterial. Does that factor into the planning of where the mixed use community goes into? I think I heard something about that, but I wasn't, wasn't sure.
So, Mister Mayor, Councilman Hope, and I maybe I'll I'll start with that one. Now Brian was on a team and and the mayor actually was too. When we came up again with the future land use map designations you see on this screen. That was considered and in talking with Compass and looking at some of the modeling, some of that regional traffic you could potentially have from people. You know, in Emmett, using Star to get down to Amazon. They think they're going to hop on the highway because it's going to be faster than taking Star. Yes, there's a river crossing and you could do it. It's go out of direction a little bit, but most people are going to want to access the interstate or use something that's a little more. So even the trips on Star Road, even though it is a longer road with the river crossing, most of the trips are shorter. Because there's other facilities that 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 will provide more of a regional trip. So that location was talked about, should go on this side of the intersection, that side, both sides, all sides. How do we decide that? But again, that was decided back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen as we developed the comp plan. Not so much with the field specific area plan you see here. Mister Mayor.
Yes, Brian.
You just one further comment on that, with the exception of the neighborhood center and to use your original question, Councilman Holgon. The land use is out here, the plan isn't adopting the land uses out there. The plan is adopting how we develop out there, what some of that looks like. So there's a lot of specificity on the mixed use communities, starting in Midland Center, but other than that, it's. It's it's not nailed to the floor. It it can change and adopt as as State Highway sixteen throws everything to the wind.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, Mr. Court. Do we have anyone sign up for my testimony on this item?
Mister Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item at this time? Or if you're online and you'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. Seeing no one in either way wishing to provide any comments. I'll turn this over to you, counsel, for additional questions or to close the public hearing or to continue it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
My comment is I, I think it's great work. I don't think it ever ends. We acknowledge that. But this is exactly what we asked you to do and it provides a little more detail and sideboards to help us and also help the landowners know what's expected out there. It's going to be incumbent upon the seven of us to have the discipline to stay true to it and to go slow if necessary in order to ensure we have data for natural gas concerns or acquiring park space or hoping our sister agency, the school district can acquire school spots. But if it means we go slow, I think that's the discipline we have to have. So I'm supportive of all the texts that you've, as amended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's really a great process, very thorough. It's exactly what we wanted. So the work probably starts again tomorrow for the next version of it, but that's how we do things. It's how we have to continue to evolve. So I'm comfortable and supportive of moving forward today, knowing that there's ongoing concerns and things we'll look into after it's been adopted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I, I think I can get on board with that thought process. If it feels like councils in alignment on the go slow approach and getting additional data about the LNG buffer. I don't think that should hold this up completely, but certainly wouldn't want to move forward on any serious development out there until we have those answers. So I'm just hoping part of the plan of implementation could be to study that further. And hopefully I'm not the only person that has that concern or we can get the information.
And just so a clerk, council has, you're going to have to approve a lift station for our public works department before any of this can ever really progress further than where it is. So technically you are going to control all the cards on the timing. That is planned, that is coming forward, I think in the next three budget years. I'm not exactly sure, but I, you know, I, I look at this as a five to six years before you see anything come online further to the west. That will give the road time to get in the other things and the market to figure some of these things out and answer the question. So but I, and I agree with the comments, Ben, I, I think this is great work and I think it's, you don't lay out a vision and a plan, the other 10 mile specific area plan. You started with the vision, you went to implement it, you've modified as you move forward where you saw necessary, but it's better to have a vision than not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
I move that we close the public hearing for the Fields area, Field Sub Area Plan H20210047.
Second the motion.
I have motion second, close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the ayes have it. Councilon Pro.
I move that we approve the comprehensive plan text amendment to incorporate the Fields Sub Area Plan. For H20210047.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion second to approve H20210047. Is there any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Holland.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I was about ready to make a recommendation to hire another consultant to maybe take a look at the Fields District. Good thing you guys made a motion. Just kidding.
With that, we will move on to item three, which is a public hearing continued from October 26, 2021 for here in Village Expansion H2021-0027. And I'll ask Alan to make any additional comments.
Good evening, mayors, member of the council. Just real quick, little refresher. If you remember, this is a property located southeast intersection, North Meridian Road and East Blue Heron Drive, consisting of six properties, several different zonings. They wanted to annex this property into the city. There's an existing apartment complex there now, 108 buildings, or sorry, 108, 108 units in five buildings. Applicant applicant wanted to annex this property to have two new buildings with a total of 36 units. The city council asked the applicant, continue this for the applicant to look at two things particularly. First was to see if they could increase parking. The second was a soft suggestion in regard to whether they could better orient the open space. What you see here is on the left, what, what you saw, what you see on the right, what's dotted there in the line is, I believe, 10 new parking spaces. This is the only new information that I have received from the applicant at this point.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
Thank you. Alan, if I remember correctly, not only did we ask them to, to look at, to add new parking, we asked them to justify the, the spaces and why, and to look at their own information from the property management company. Did they provide anything in regard to how they decided that 10 additional spaces was the amount that was necessary?
Again, councilperson, this is all I've received. I'm hoping that the applicant will have a very thorough explanation, but sort of this has been punted into your court now. So I believe, I hope that Tamara will be able to give you an answer.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Then I will ask the applicant. So please come on and provide an update on the information. If you could say your name and address for the record, Tamara.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with the land group at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. With me virtually, not with me in the room, but on the line also, should, should we need to bring them on? Is Misty Staluto with the architectural side and Summer Hazen on the management side. So thank you for having us again. And if I can share my screen, I will. Let's see here. All right. So just a brief overview, this, this is an infill project. We are requesting an annexation of 1.36 acres, a rezone of 5.54 acres to R40 and a CUP to allow expansion of an existing multifamily complex. The previous site plan was this. And we did provide another parking or another site plan, which added these 10 parking stalls on the side. We were able to add these 10 stalls to the site plan and still exceed the landscaping requirements. Currently, phase two provides an additional 28 stalls and phase one had three additional stalls. So we have 31 extra stalls and to, to answer the question about the, the ratios, I did go and do this parking analysis. I'm going to pull, I have this in the PowerPoint, but I'm just going to open the spreadsheet so I can kind of highlight different things for you. Did that switch screens for you? Did, okay, good. So one thing that I want to show you, so here in Village Phase One had this delta is the parking stalls over what the parking requirement is by city code. So it provided just three extra stalls with at 1%. The previous version that you saw of phase two had an additional 18 with that percentage was 26, but when you combine those two together, the, the previous one had a blended rate of 8% additional parking stalls. With this revised plan, we are able to add an additional 10. So now we're at 28%, which puts the site at 41% overparked per code. But to blend that comes to 11% when we put that with phase one. So that, that's where Heron Village is with this revised plan. And then what I did is, and you know, I was looking for a little extra direction last time with, you know, if, what, what percent do you think is, is, is where it needs to be? And Councilman Kavanagh recommended, maybe we should go back and kind of do an audit of, of other sites that have been approved through in the city. So I went and looked at some of the ones that the land group has done. And I, then I just started going through the searchable documents on the city clerk's website. And I was able to put together this spreadsheet of, of some of the others. So if we just look at this column of the percents, one of the things I, I was, there were three that kind of jumped out at me as much higher than others. The others ranged kind of between three and 6% was, was kind of more in the, in the median. The, the median ranges is in the three to 4% range. This Herosa Village, this is kind of an outlier. It provided 100% extra. That one is behind Trader Joe's. And so I'm, I'm not familiar with that project, so I don't know the reasoning behind that. Jump Creek is a fourplex and it's fairly small. So nine extra stalls gave it a 16%. I am familiar with Southridge, the land group did this one and phase one and two didn't provide any extra parking. Phase three had extra parking at 17%. But when you blend these three phases together, the entirety of Southridge, one, two, and three is at 4%. Let's see. So going back to this, the, the complex or the, the community also has a live-in manager. She lives on the property and she, for this extra time that we had, she continued to do audits nightly onsite between eight and 11:00 PM every night to just see where people were parking. And first it was determined that there were some management practices that could be improved. There were 14 garages that were not being utilized because they, they were, you had to pay extra to get a garage. So that has been revised to where the units that are three, have three bedrooms, they are given a garage with their unit. So it's not an additional fee. So those 14 are now all filled and being utilized. Also, they've looked at implementing a sticker process so that they know which, which cars are supposed to be on the property. And that has helped quite a bit. And then they've assigned covered parking stalls where before it was just anybody could, could park anywhere. They still are seeing a range of between 30 to 60 empty parking stalls each evening between eight to 11:00 PM. But they are still seeing between 19 and 24 cars still parking on the street. Not all those cars have their sticker, so it is looking like at least 30% are not tenants of this, of this community. The additionally, we, we asked them, once they gave us kind of some, some more feedback on this, we asked them if they could tell us if there was any type of pattern with where on the property the, the open sites were, the open parking stalls were. And if I go to this, this previous one, the so the site currently has this area down here, this kind of triangular area with only one of the smaller buildings, but it has extra parking down here. And these are the ones that aren't being utilized as much. People aren't going down there. So this phase two really helps balance the site and, and square this off. There is still an area, but this, the, the tip of this has the amenity with, with the basketball court. But we do provide more centralized parking and kind of help balance the site so that this bottom area isn't so far away. And that's what they're finding is that this bottom area, these are the, sorry, these are the ones that are, that are vacant. And perhaps parking on the street is, is more convenient. So we feel like this adding phase two is really going to help that situation with balancing the site. As far as centralizing the open space, we did look at that and it, it felt like the, once we, once we figured out this, the need for the parking to be more centralized, that, that we did leave that open space where it was and, and brought and keep the parking more in the centralized area where, where it needs, where it's needed. So to alleviate the street parking. So in conclusion, we are providing more parking stalls than city code. We are higher than the median for other communities that are, have been approved within the city of Meridian. The management is, has acknowledged some deficiencies in, in their practices. And they are making changes to their policies and encouraging their tenants to park on the property and and are encouraging them not to park on the street. The the issue with parking on the street is that it's legal. And if you recall, Mr. Bonjorno mentioned last time in our last hearing that, that he did not have an issue with, with the parking on the street, that it is not a fire department concern. So that's a little, it's, it's hard to, you know, there's no consequences for it and it is legal. So there, those tenants aren't doing anything wrong. So the management can encourage, but they can't require. So if council would like, we are happy to work with ACHD to at a minimum put, work with them to do no parking on the, I mean, if I go back to a site plan for you to look at on the north side of Blue Heron and especially to the west of the, of the two westernmost access points that we could work with ACHD on, on some no parking signs on Blue Heron. We've read the staff report and we thank staff for their thorough review. We did go back and look closely at the parking. We think we have some, some good numbers, some, some, and we fit within the range of what the city of Meridian has. And, and frankly, the site is, it appears per the audits that it is overparked. It just maybe parking is in the wrong, is too far away from, from where the current residents are. But once phase two is implemented, then it really will. But once phase two is implemented, then it really will help balance the site. We agree with staff's recommendations. And if you recall from last time, we did have a small clarification to condition two point C. And that was the pathway from, do I have an exhibit of that? Here it is, this little pathway going from Eureka at the end of Blue Heron. This was going to a fire department access only. And we just wanted to add the words improved as approved by Meridian Fire and ACHD, just so if there's any tweaks in there with, once we get into construction drawings. So with that, we, we ask for your approval tonight and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Tamara. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Perrow.
Just a couple of quick questions. What is the ratio of three bedrooms to two bedrooms to one bedrooms? What percentage of the units are each? You know, three bedroom unit has the same requirement, I believe, as two bedroom in terms of number of parking stalls required, yet you may have additional vehicles. So you had said that the garages are being utilized now by, or they're being assigned to three bedroom units. Hopefully they're utilizing them and not for parking and not storage. But how many three bedroom units are there in relationship to the two bedroom? And the, the, I'm asking that question because I appreciate the analysis that you did. But I think the missing piece of the analysis is that some of those complexes may not have any three bedroom units and that does make a difference. So it's the size of the units that are as important as, as, you know, in that percent, the ratios that you showed for the amount of parking that's above what is required.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, the, the existing in phase one, there are twelve three-bedroom units. And in phase two, we are proposing an additional twelve. So that would be a total of twenty-four. The way that the parking was currently, and, and you're correct, the parking requirement by the city, and I, I did put that on the top of, of my parking analysis here, that both two and three bedrooms by city code require the two, just two parking stalls. And what the management has changed is that they are assigning three parking stalls to, to the three bedroom units, two to the two bedroom and one to the one bedroom is, is the way it's being looked at right now. And that is different than what it was before. That was one of the management practices that they looked at.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Counselwoman Perrow.
Thank you, Tamara. So you had said that thirty percent of the vehicles parking on the streets are not residents, meaning seventy percent most likely are. Now that they're assigning the permits and still seeing these vehicles parking on the street, do they have contact information for those vehicles? They obviously can track the license plate numbers now that they have them registered to a system. Have they contacted any of these vehicle owners and just ask about why they're parking on the street? And if there's some, something that's causing them to do so, like maybe they've been backed into within the complex and they don't want that to happen, so they're parking it. Is there, have you, did they go that far as to get that information? That maybe there's a legitimate reason they're not parking in their assigned locations?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, I, I don't know that. I, I didn't ask that specific question. I do know that they mentioned that some of the vehicles that are on the street are some larger trucks and maybe they don't feel comfortable navigating the site. But I don't know that we, if you'd like, the, I believe a representative from the management company is on the line that we could, we could ask that question, but I don't know that one specifically.
Are you wanting the management company to answer that, Counselwoman Perrow?
It would be helpful if it's not too inconvenient, yes.
I don't know, Tamara, do you know, it looks like they have raised their hand.
That should be Summer Hazen. Do you have a Summer on there?
Summer, if you can say your name and address for the record. I'll need to unmute.
There you are. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I do apologize. My, this is Summer Hazen. I'm the regional manager overseeing Heron Village. To answer that question, we have started to reach out to some of the residents that are parking on the road. However, not all of them have come in and registered their vehicles with us. So if we don't have that information, we're not able to contact them. We are finding that some of them are guests. I don't want to say necessarily unauthorized occupants. We, we haven't been able to, to confirm that. What Tamara had, Tamara had shared was, she is correct. Some of them do have some larger vehicles that they're afraid that they're going to hit the pole or some have when they were trying to back into the carport spaces. But to reiterate too, some of them are also related to our lineman school students where we, we have limited the amount of parking spaces through the school. And I actually asked them to park at the school versus at the community to help limit some of those cars.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Schrader.
So thanks, Tamara, I appreciate it. I see you looked at the open space and could you provide some commentary on why it wasn't feasible to make it more usable and more centralized?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, the what we looked at was the potential of moving, like swapping these two, the open space for building G and, and having that more centralized. We did lose some parking stalls when we did that and it's, and we just felt like that having the more centralized parking was, was more beneficial. And then, oops, this up here, if you see what is next to us, it's a, it's a meatpacking plant. And having, having the, the residences right up against that property line didn't seem, you know, where we'd want them, that we would want that buffer in there for that. We can, this is an open space and we can activate it. You know, have a, have a nice fence around it and, and, and very much usable. But it was determined that, that the parking was, was probably the most important.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'll probably save my comments toward the end of the meeting. But yeah, I think you're, you're coming from a very hard place, right? You're trying to make up for the sins of phase one with your parking. So you already have that challenge. And then I look at it like, you know, this phase should stand on its own and it should meet that high bar all on its own for open space. So I think it's really tough. You know, I, I get it, but at the same time, like, should little kids be playing next to the meatpacking plant too? Right? I mean, I, it, it's here, it's their neighbor and, you know, that's tough. There are just some, I don't know, continuing concerns, I think, for me on this one. And the open space is a piece of it. I'll just, you know, continue to listen and be open-minded.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Perrow.
One of the public comments we received was, was regarding trash. And it's something that was, we received written comment. It was also discussion in the last hearing. Just wondering if the applicant can quickly, quickly comment if the applicant or, Tamara or the Summer could quickly comment on if that's something that has also been changed or discussed or new methods improved?
Yes, of course, this is, this is Summer. So in regards to that, we added a trash can out on the, on the corner of our property on Blue Heron. And we have onsite maintenance staff five days a week and they are now patrolling that road as well as the community manager picking up any trash that they see that's being left behind.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had no advance sign up.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come and provide testimony on the additional information that's been provided this evening? And we have nobody in the waiting area online, so we will just be focused on who's in here for now. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Valinda Sores and I live at one three eight East Waterbury Lane, Meridian, across from the apartments.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us come and speak and listen tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I, I'm not understanding really how this next phase is going to help with that, that parking, that lower parking that she's talking about. I'm not really quite sure how that, how that will balance it out, knowing the property myself and walking around there. I don't quite understand how that will help. Because the apartment, the way it's situated, it's, the parking is still not going to be over by where the buildings are at. It does not account for visitors. And I do my own survey of, of cars every day. And there's around thirty, thirty-two cars on the street. Most of the cars that, a lot of the cars that are parking on the street are huge trucks, you know, big trucks. And some of them are trucks that have trailers because the people that live there are working men and they have big trailers that they park on the street behind their trucks. A lot of them are cars. The trash situation, they did put a trash can out, but of course, it's only good if people use it. You know, they still just open their car doors and throw their McDonald bags trash everywhere. They seem to think our common area, our common area at the Heron Brook Townhomes is their trash can. So it would be really nice if you plea, if you would consider, like mentioned, putting no parking from at least Heron Brook, on Heron Brook from our first entrance to the, to North Meridian Road. Because that's really dangerous pulling in and out of there when they're parked so close to the edge of the street. You can't, it's hard to see. And it, and possibly even consider no parking on the north side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Holland.
I, I wanted to make sure I understood your comment about the no parking on the north side of the street. There's East Waterbury Lane. It extends west and then you've got North Richter, it looks like, and then Meridian Road. So you'd mentioned Heron Brook and I wasn't sure where that was in relationship.
Our town, our townhomes are right there on East Waterbury. It's just, they're senior townhomes right in there and they circle around to, on Richter there. Kind of makes like a
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's kind of cut off on the screen. So no parking would extend from East Waterbury Lane on their north side toward a Meridian Road? Would, that was your request then?
Well, if you would consider that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Borden.
Can I ask a question of Deputy Chief Bonjourno? There's a condition, that two C that was referenced on the pathway. Yes. And it's, the way it's drafted now, it's changed to say fifteen feet wide or is approved by Meridian Fire? And, and I don't know why we say fifteen feet wide. Why don't we just say as approved by Meridian Fire?
Yeah, that would be, Mr. Mayor, Counselwoman Borden, that would be fine also. The, the issue we had was right at the west end of that pathway, there's a telephone pole in the way. And so that kind of, that's our narrowest spot. It's larger than twelve feet. So I think we, Tamara or somebody went out and measured it and they came up with fifteen feet. And that's, that's where that number came from. So it was just whatever the narrowest spot was, is what that width was going to be through there.
Is it, Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Borden.
Is it just more helpful for you to have just the language as approved by Meridian Fire?
That would be fine. Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Chief.
Thank you. To kind of follow up on the comments that, that she gave, it just so happens the last time that we talked about this project, I, I drove through there on my way home. It was like eleven thirty at night. I think we're here late that night. And one hundred percent spot on, there was over thirty cars down Blue Heron. The bulk, there was at least a dozen and they were large trucks parked in the dirt parking lot where this potential project is going. So after seeing what I saw, the thirty cars plus the ones parked in the dirt parking lot, I'm not very supportive of closing off that no parking between Waterbury and Richter or whatever that street is. One hundred percent agree with the Richter to the intersection. That definitely should be signed no parking fire lane. The road, like we stated last time, is, is plenty wide. I don't have issues with cars parking on both sides. This is almost, it's one of those, we should probably wait and see if we want to stop the parking on the north side, but I, I think it should stay as is. That's just my two cents worth. But I am, I will one hundred percent work with Tamara and ACHD or whoever for that. The, the entrance to phase one to the intersection, because they do, they literally park right up to the, the curve of the, curve of the curbing, curve of the curbing. That's a tough one to say. So definitely it needs to be signed no parking to, to make sure that we can make that corner and get around there. Anybody can get around the corner.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Perrow.
Question for Tamara. Is there being consideration made of creating some parking spots that are wider, longer and posting trucks only signs on those so we can get some? We haven't had a discussion yet about the vehicles that are parking in what is now the dirt lot. So that's another element that's apparently an issue. So has, have you made any consideration or has the, your client made any consideration of making some accommodations? This is increasingly becoming a problem in every apartment complex, not just this one. I see it all over the place, especially not only, you know, wide trucks like dooleys, but actually people bringing their work trucks to park in their apartment complexes and their trailers.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, we, we did look at that and we could accommodate that. What that does is it brings the overall parking count down because those would be oversized parking spots. But we could, we could do that. One of, and if you recall, Summer told us last time that they have a corporate housing agreement with the Lineman College. And they have asked for those trucks not to come. They, we think that the majority of those are from that agreement for, for those, those Lineman College students staying here. And then they have also, management has decided not to renew all of those so that they're going to, in July, when those leases are up, they're not going to renew those. So that will, that will help that as well.
So Tamara, if you would, since we have no further testimony and technically it's your turn to wrap up, if you want to give any final wrap-up comments, we can officially hit that point and then we can continue with any questions from counsel if they have them.
Great. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just wrap up with a couple of things. I did I did want to re, revisit the open space and that this phase two does stand on its own. The existing in phase one are these. Phase two is this, but it is, it does have about thirty percent more open space than what's required for phase two. So it does stand alone, but together it works better with, with having all the amenities. There's, there's a nice clubhouse and there's, there's a tot lot, all those kinds of things. So this is the clubhouse that, that'll be utilized for everybody. It was something that was planned to be an expansion, you know, especially with this one that was down in the bottom. That phase two was always something that was planned. So this is final, finishing out that plan. And what I meant for the balancing is that currently it's kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's got these jagged edges and it's just kind of more like a triangle, which, which isn't a very efficient space. And having more of a rectangle definitely balances it. And putting another twelve plex next to this twelve plex will definitely utilize the parking on this end of the, of the site better than what it's currently doing. Management has really stepped up. I think they've, I don't know that they knew that there was such a problem before, but they're, they're making some, some big strides, especially with the, in, in how they're addressing the parking, how they're addressing the, the garages. Those are being monitored and looked at closely for making sure they're being parked in and not just utilized for storage units. And I'm just seeing if there was anything else I missed here. The, the trash and having their maintenance crews patrol the, the, the rideaway instead of just on the property. And we are open to whatever council's wishes are on the parking on the street. Like I said, that the, the parking now is legal, so nobody's doing anything wrong by parking there. That if it's your wish that we work with ACHD, we're more than happy to do that. Especially where Mr. Bonjourno mentioned the, from the main entrance, from the western entrance to Meridian Road, working with them on that. So thank you very much and we respectfully request your approval tonight with that one, one change to, to two point A. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm going to hold off.
To break the silence. Counsel, to, I appreciate what I've heard that the management company has done, is considering. The question I ask counsel is can we approve development based upon what they will continue to do? Or not do, or decisions they may or may not make? And, you know, to a certain extent, we, as a city, you, after the things are approved, you really don't have any input on what, on what management practices anybody does from a practical standpoint. So is it fair or appropriate to take those into consideration as you're looking at this? I don't know the answer to that, but it, it just is. It's great to hear, but is it sustainable? Is that what's going to make this a successful area is only management practices or does this help or hurt long term?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just kidding on waiting. That was, that was a long awkward pause and so I, I'll go ahead and and express my, my point of view. I, I don't have any issues really with the design of, I guess, this pro, I mean, it's a good project that, the only issue that I have is the parking. And when you have that many cars parked in the dirt parking lot and you have that many cars parked on the road and you're adding this much density to this, to this area. I just don't think ten extra parking spots is going to do it. And I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know if it's the Lineman College. I don't know if it's, you know, extra people that are living inside these units that the, the property management individual doesn't know about. I, I honestly don't know. And I don't know if anyone has the answers to that, those questions. All I know is that there are a ton of cars parked in this area with, and the solution provided is, is not enough for me to be supportive of this application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I agree with much of what Councilman, Council President Burnt said. It seems to me after their analysis that it's not a lack of parking spots. It's not a lack of number of spaces. It's locations and so, and location and sizes of the spots. And when we had this hearing last time, it, it, we were of the impression that there would not be enough spaces and, and that's not the issue. So until the applicant sort of resolves that challenge, it's not the quantity of spaces. Which is what we, we asked them to, to go resolve it, resolve the issue. We didn't specifically say what. We didn't say add more spaces. We just said, go figure out what the problem is and bring us a solution. And it's not solved to my satisfaction yet. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I feel for the applicant because I think they're, they're in a tough spot. The, the issues in phase one, I think are, are a problem. And, but I do look at this like phase two should stand on its own. I don't think that the open space was centralized in a usable way. If I look at the development holistically, it doesn't feel like it's connected to the rest of the development. I have, like my other council members, continued concerns about the parking, particularly given that this area is being used for overflow parking. I just don't, I don't think we're there. And I, and I have concerns about traffic as well and schools in general and overcrowding. So that's a long list of reasons, but for me, I think the, really the key critical issue is well down to parking. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like it's solved by adding more spaces necessarily. It's that inadequacy of the location of the original spaces and then the open space just looks like an afterthought to me. And I, yeah, I understand you have constraints around the site and that's tough, but it's just, just tucking it in the corner to me just didn't, didn't pull it together.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
For, for Alan, on the, on the parking. For phase one, they met city requirements for parking standards that we have in place. Is that correct?
Alan Tiefenbach, Associate Planner, yes, sir, Mr. Hoagland. They meet the minimum requirements. They exceed the minimum requirements for parking, both phases. Because they meet the minimum requirements of everything in the code, staff recommends approval.
Right. And, and, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's my dilemma is they're, they're doing what we ask and doing more than what we ask, but there, there is an issue. And one of the conflicts too is open space versus that twelve plex. Cause I thought, oh, you move that and move the twelve plex. But yet for parking purposes, that actually defeats the ability to use where they've identified additional parking. So that, that's, that's the dilemma. Well, we want them to solve the parking problem. Okay, well, we'll move here, but we want and prefer centralized open space. So you, you can't win on, on, on that one. I, I am impressed that they went through the process and looked at garages not being utilized and how they can fix that. Which is a reminder of a previous application that talked about garages, just to put that drop in the mind. The sticker process. There, there, there are cars on the street. And if they follow through with not having, renewing the Lineman's College, that probably will help. And, but to Councilwoman Pearl's point, you know, we see it everywhere and the, the bringing of trailers and, and work vehicles to, to apartment complexes does make it more difficult. It's, it's, it is tough. The, to help push traffic or parking to those underutilized, that underutilized area, I think does require some closing of no, asking for no, no parking on, on the north side of the street. I mean, it's a matter of convenience for people. There are the trailers and trucks, but for, for cars, they could park over there. But when you look at the map, if you're in this unit, you can't find anything nearby. You don't want to go clear over there. So park on the street, but I, I think that's something that we would have to look at. Yeah, this, this is difficult though to, to, to deny when, when, when they have gone for standalone here and they've gone above. Does it solve the previous problem? No, it doesn't. But at the same time, they complied with our requirements that the city put forth. Which I'm kind of setting up the argument down the road that I think we ought to change our standards. I really do for parking these complexes, but that we can discuss at another time. Because we are finding people are massing up in these, more than just family members probably, but and when, if you're in a three bedroom and you have a couple of kids and you're sharing space and they become teenagers. Cause I went through this and you're going through it, Mayor, is all of a sudden there's more vehicles around your house. You know, it's, it's, it's just the fact that you have teen drivers and you've got, need more space. Yeah, I, I have difficulty turning it down and, and I completely understand the reasons why people are, are looking at, not favorably upon this. So, but it just causes an internal angst with me by, 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 by doing that for, for this particular situation. So I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Appreciate Councilman Hoagland's comments. Tamara, I, I, I do appreciate, and I should have expressed this earlier, your work and the management's work to try to solve what you can solve. So thank you very much for that. That makes it better for, for even the, the existing phases that are there for everyone. Do have a question though. Is there any way to incentivize residents to park in the farther away spaces? Whether it's a small discount to their rent or something that, that gives them an incentive to park somewhere that they wouldn't, that they're avoiding parking because of, I'm looking at the, looking at the design of the entire complex. It seems like the buildings are fairly evenly spread out. So it's not as if all the buildings are toward the street and all the parking is on the south side. So I guess I'm not completely understanding why there's, you know, why those areas are, are being avoided, why folks aren't parking there. So is there, is there, is that something that you can talk about with your, with your client is, is creating some incentives in some way? Cause I'm sitting here thinking, a lot of this is solved. If we can direct those vehicles that are parking on the street, that are residents in a, in a way that encourages them to park in the, in the units. And again, back to the mayor's point, there's nothing the city has any control over and nothing that we can, nothing that we can enforce. And so it's, it's really up to management to, to make that commitment.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl. I, I think they would be open to looking at, at some incentives. And just to show you, so there's one, two, three, four, five buildings on the site. And if you kind of draw a line here, there's quite a bit of extra parking that is, that's really only close to this twelve plex, which is the smallest building on the site. And so adding another twelve plex there is really going to help open this up and it won't be a dead end any longer. Right now it's, it goes down here and it just dead ends to where it really, it opens this up and it balances the site more. So that's what I feel like I didn't explain very well to, for you guys to, you know, to kind of understand what I mean by that, that whole balance thing. But I, I, I'm sure that the, the management and that our client will, would be open to, to incentivizing, you know, different parking. And they can still work on, and if you guys know of, you know, if there's a site on, or a parking, a management company or some sort of management of parking that you know that's working really well. Perhaps we could even look into that. But, but I, I really feel like with this not being a dead end any longer and having this open up that it, it's, it's going to get utilized a lot more with, with another building to activate it as well. I also wanted to mention real quickly that it was mentioned that we had ten extra parking stalls and that's not, that's not correct. The blended total is thirty-one extra parking stalls on the site, which is an eleven percent. Which is eleven percent over what city code is and is, is more than what kind of the median is for the entire city. The ten extra was just from our last site plan and that last site plan had eighteen extra. And now we have twenty-eight extra, but phase one had three additional stalls or only one percent. So we are making the parking situation considerably better with, with phase two.
And counsel, that's, I guess that's my question for counsel. Is the situation going to be better fixing with no changes? Or is the situation going to be better with these changes? Would counsel feel more comfortable if there wasn't thirty-six units, but thirty with the parking? You know, are there any of those elements that make sense? What, what would be the, what would be the magic parking number of parking as the underlying issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, as I was listening to people, I, I was trying to figure out if it's density because they've added parking spaces. But if all of that other unit, instead of what thirty-four was down to twenty-four in a twelve unit, you're reducing ten units, but have the percentage of parking has actually increased even more, does that help solve the problem? And I don't know, Tamara, if your client would, you've got an ROI that they expect and, and all those good things. I, I agree with you. The opening up of that triangle piece does facilitate flow out to that street that would, would allow quicker access than being stuck and having to wind your way all the way through like they have to do now. But again, it's still changing people's behavior and, and getting them to go there. But that, that, that is an option. If you want to up, up it, you just reduce the number on one of the, on the larger unit. And maybe you, you flip that twelve where the open space is and move that open space to the middle. Because even though it's a little more unbalanced that way, if you've reduced the density on the larger one, it still accommodates, accommodates the parking. So I don't like designing on the fly, but just, just looking at options for, for, you know, housing that is needed in our area, apartments are in demand. This was planned to expand all along and I, I think you've come up with some solutions that might be workable, but we still need to cross that finish line somehow.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Councilman Hoagland is sort of selling me on his, on the fly designing. I, I think if this came back and the open space was more centralized and you lost some density and therefore increased the parking, that, that might get me there. I'd hate to close the door on it completely. But that'd be a huge, a huge rework of this whole thing. And I think we have to, you know, vote on what's before us at some point. But I, I'm not on board right now with, with this, the way it's currently written. I think if you lose the density, it can, it solves some of the management concerns. Like for me, the management concerns aren't, aren't as strong of a mitigant because I'm just concerned they'll sell the property and, and then, you know, someone that, that is a smart business person is going to charge for the garages as they should and and we'll be in the same spot, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Tamara.
I, I'm texting with, with my client to, to get some feedback. I I'm texting with with my client to to get some feedback. And I I do think we could do, go down a little bit on the density and and we could look at what that looks like. We haven't done a site plan on that, so we could look at what that looks like with the with the centralized open space. So I know you guys need to make a decision at some point, but I I think with with the feedback that we've had just now, that that we could go back and do one more site plan for you if we could continue this one more time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
If Council decides to redo a request to continue, I would also also request the applicant to work on parking spots that are larger and and wider and deeper. It I just I don't think, again, I not convinced it's completely a number of spots issue as much as the larger vehicles not. And however they want to manage that is totally up to them. But this, this is not going to be the first time we're going to have, or the last time we're going to have this conversation about the sizes of vehicles that are parking in apartment complexes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Council, just, I know you know this, but I just want to bring this up. You made a comment earlier about the concern on that being continually brought up that, well, now this isn't annexation. So I mean, you are heavily related to create a development agreement for that. You also have a CUP that can also add those conditions. The CUP, you just need to be specific about what it is you want. Well, there are some ways that we have with this particular application to ensure some of those continuing practices will remain on the parcels if if you do it again. And I know you knew this, but I just wanted to make sure that that got part of the
Oh, Council, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to ask the applicant anything first before you make a motion?
Yes, if I might.
Councilman Hoagland.
Tamara, checking with the city clerk. The earliest that we could get to this would be January 11th. Is that favorable to your calendar to be present? And does that give you enough time to prepare what's been requested?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I'm looking at my calendar right now. So the January 11th, I'm sorry, is that the date you said?
Yes.
That day is wide open on my calendar, and I think that date would work great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I would move that we continue the Heron Village Expansion Discussion, H 2021 dash zero two seven to the time of January 11th, 2022.
Second motion.
I have a motion a second to continue this until January 11th, 2022. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Before we vote, I'm wondering if 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 Council decides they would like the applicant to comply with the DA, would we need to discuss that now so that staff can put together conditions before the next meeting?
Yes, Alan. If Alan T. Frombach Associate Planner, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if we're talking about just continuing this for them to rework the site plan, I mean, this wouldn't be any different than anything else. We wouldn't have to deal with the DA now. The if you wanted to add conditions, we would just add the conditions of approval, and then the DA would come in front of you in two weeks.
Thank you.
I have a motion a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm favoring by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? We have four ayes, one nay, and the motion to continue is agreed to. Councils, go ahead and take a 10 minute break. So we'll pick back up at 8:30 with our next two items. All right, Council, we'll go ahead and come back from recess. And we will move on to item four on our agenda, which is the public hearing for Elderberry Estate Subdivision, H 2021 dash 0044. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alan T. Frombach Associate Planner with City of Meridian. This is a application to rezone to OT Old Town. It's currently zoned CC, and this is to allow three duplex lots. Originally, with the staff report, it was to be four. It's been reduced since that time. Properties zone, so it's surrounded by OT is a surround OT zoning to the north, to the east and to the west and to the all all four sides, also recommended for Old Town by the comprehensive plan. Presently, a vacant lot. It's about a half an acre in size. I don't know why that just happened. Okay, so the property is a flag lot, and the only access is right now is from North Meridian. I'll sort of draw it out to you so you can see the property lines. I'll sort of draw it out to you so you can see the property lines here. So it's a flag lot surrounded right now by office residential, a salon and some multifamily. The future line use map recommends this for Old Town, this is a variety of uses. The applicant proposes three duplexes on this property. What you're seeing here is four, they've again since reduced this. There are two existing access easements from North Meridian Road. There is an access, it's here and there's an access here. Now, these are both private accesses again with an access easement, these are not right of way. The southernmost driveway, which is here, provides access to this applicant's property and also for the parking lot down here for the salon. And the access here to the north provides access to this property as well as to the adjacent property to the north. Both ACHD and fire have reviewed these and don't have any issues. The only comments the staff had is the UDC requires a minimum width of five feet for sidewalks. The only sidewalk that's actually on this applicant's property is the one down here. So we've recommended a condition of approval that they construct a sidewalk to five feet here. We have suggested that they work with the adjacent property owners to widen the other sidewalks. But again, we can't require offsite improvements for somebody else's property. We've also, just as a sort of a side note, the code requires that the pedestrian walking services be distinguished by something other than striping. So our conditions of approval also include that. As this is a flag lot with the only access being here, there would be no landscape buffer or any other landscaping that's actually required. This site plan indicates that they intend to relinquish a easement, which is here, this is an Idaho power easement. We have added a condition of approval that that be done prior to the final plat. The only comments that we have had was at the original planning commission meeting, the property owners to this property here had some issues because they were parking here. And I believe they were parking down here. Now, the problem with that is that all of this is an access easement, it doesn't allow for parking. So technically, they shouldn't have been parking within this access easement. There was a lot of discussion about this at the planning commission. Planning commission continued this for the applicant and the neighborhood and the adjacent neighbor to work this out. Applicant came back to the planning commission at the November 4th PC and had said that them and the adjacent neighbor had worked out an agreement. Where the applicant was going to provide additional parking for them and help them move a fence over here. We have not heard anything else from the neighbors, so we believe that all the conditions, all the issues have been satisfied. With that, staff recommends approval of this, which would be a short plat for three lots and a rezoning from CC to OT. And I will stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant with us in the room or if you'd like to come forward for any comments? If you can say your name and address for the record, be recognized for 15 minutes.
My name is Jonathan Long, address 1859 South Topaz Way in Meridian. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't have any additional comments this time, but I am open to any questions that there may be.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
I'm curious about what the gray space is on this drawing, shows that there's going to be some picnic tables. My assumption is that the area around the grass will be fenced. So is all of that gray area just open space, what is that part of the property, right?
So, so great question. The gray area to the right, which is to the east, is actually a sewer easement. And so the gray area that's perpendicular to that is a 14 foot wide proposed sewer access easement to a manhole located back in that sewer easement.
Mr. Mayor, a follow up?
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
So is all of that going to be gravelled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I think since Jonathan sat so long through the previous one and we talk all about parking, it looks like you provide adequate parking, four spaces per unit.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Commissioner, have anyone signed up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item? Is there anybody online that'd like to provide testimony on this item? So you know, in Washington, to provide testimony, does the applicant wish to make any final comments or you good with your previous comments? We're good with our previous comments, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Borden.
I'll throw a sideways question out, but in other applications, we've totally different than this, but we've seen easement areas, I think incorporated into, I mean, it's within the parcel of each property. That the property owner would fence and landscape even though it's over and upon the easement area. Understanding that, yes, it may one point in the future get removed and torn out, but the trade off was that you don't have some kind of spite strips and weeds and I can't imagine what this gray area of gravel is going to look like in five years. Behind a fence on all sides, it's sort of a, it's kind of a little hidden no man's land, unless I'm misunderstanding it. It looks like it's just going to be a corridor of gravel and weeds and garbage and hiding. Not, that's not the intent, that's just what we've seen happen. So in other applications, we've allowed the landowner to fence to the property line, green it up over the easement. And is that concept not applicable here? Or am I overstating the concern of what appears to be a kind of a spite strip of hidden gravel weeds? Made you come all the way back and sit down before I asked you, I apologize, but yeah, come on up and maybe I'm mischaracterizing how this built builds out, but I think Jessica's question is a good one.
So we are totally agreeable to having that as greenscape as opposed to gravel, but really, we would want to be working with planning zoning just as far as wanting to make sure that that area is to their liking and their preference for accessing that manhole and that sewer easement. But our preference would be greenscape over gravel.
Mr. Mayor.
Have Alan reply.
Alan Tiefenbach, so it would be up to Public Works whether or not they're okay with them landscaping over the city's easement.
And when I say use the word landscape, it's not, we, you know, no trees.
Native seed, yeah, native seed.
In those circumstances and other projects, you can't plant trees and shrubbery upon the easement area, but you can green it up.
It would be maybe just a condition of approval that something like at Public Works, Public Works approval, there would be native seed in that easement or something like that. I can't, I can't say what Public Works are going to say they're going to do, but you would have to work with them.
My guess is that they're going to want to back a sewer truck down that. Some point, that would be the concern, but we can leave it up to them, obviously, whatever their needs are.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, I don't want to comment too much on Alan's project, but from what I know from Public Works is they require, it's a requirement to have a 14 foot paved access over sewer reasons. So that, that's why that is there, I'm assuming that that cannot be changed. Granted, that's going to have to probably come from our city engineer and then his other personnel to determine if there are alternatives to that. There could be a condition of approval added that would then say, you know, to work with Public Works, but with the anticipation that that is a requirement that could remain.
Well, we do happen to have someone from Public Works on the line, if we'd like to have them weigh in on this topic.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council members, I'm, we generally will require the 14 foot gravel access road unless there's, there's access to the manholes on either side with a gravel access road or some kind of pavement. If there's access to the manholes, then we'll allow landscaping over that, but I'm not sure on this one what that situation is. But we can certainly work with the, work with the developer in those confines.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hoagland.
Question for Kyle, I understand the 14 foot wide sewer access and then do you need access to all three manholes? I mean, there's one in behind each one as opposed to just access, say, to the one to the north. Where, and then the rest can be greenscaped, that's, you know, but I don't know if it works that way.
Joe, do we have a picture that shows the manholes that you can put up?
He's shaking his head no.
Oh, sorry, no, I do not have pictures of the manholes, sorry.
I'm sorry.
You said Kyle, I didn't.
I said, I said Joe and it was, it's Alan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, confusing, no, I do not have any pictures of the manholes.
I apologize, I was not ready for this question and I don't have my map up, so I don't know where the manholes are. But, but it's generally a, an issue of getting to the manholes. And if, and if they need that, that access to get to the manholes, then it needs to be gravelled.
Mr. Mayor. I, so Kyle, we may be something where we can say, you know, they can, can, you know, greenscape that if, if allowed by Public Works. That way you guys can take a look at it and if it's gravel, it's gravel and if not, the applicant can move forward and green up whatever's available to green up.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I think that's right on the money, that's, that's the appropriate language to have in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Is, is there going to be, are these going to be owned or are they going to be for sale or are they going to be investor owned?
Oh, we're going to be holding them and so they are, these duplexes will be rentals.
So there will be a management entity of some kind that can handle any kind of issues with weeds or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
The council, one alternative, so I believe our code requires that they fence the property. Could consider whether or not you want to acquire if developers agreement or only four foot fencing against the easement. So it becomes less of a hiding spot or less of a outside out of mine spot, but there's still a six foot fence of the perimeter of the property. People living in these duplexes will be able to ease crashing later or people back there.
Counsel, I'm Borden.
Can we ask Lieutenant Harper to comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. That, that is a really good point and a concern that I had, those hidden spaces can become challenging for law enforcement. Really, if you look at a lot of the SEPTed requirements, that is kind of a borderline no-no to have, have that dark unknown space. Where, where things can happen, I mean, obviously the trash and stuff, but we're more worried about, you know, the public safety piece. So I don't know what the lighting is like back there at all, if it's just pitch black because it's gravel. So I'm not quite aware of what your lighting plan is either.
At present, we don't have a lighting plan for that 14 foot strip. There's going to be rear porch, rear porch lighting for all the duplexes that are there. If additional lighting is required for that 14 foot strip, that would definitely be something that we'd be happy to consider.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Schrader.
Just a clarification for the applicant, are you proposing a certain type of fencing, like open vision fencing would be good? I think probably to address that concern, is that something you're contemplating? At the edge of where the lawn is before the gravel, potential criminal area could start, like open fence, you know, wrought iron or whatever, so people could see what's going on, is that workable?
Yes, ma'am, we're looking at four foot tall wrought iron fencing for the backyards.
Got it, okay.
Follow up, Mayor. That would be very beneficial if, if the folks that are living here can see back there, it definitely would reduce any concerns of mine. I wasn't sure if Bill was talking about the fencing on the property line or were you talking about the fencing of the duplexes? Yeah, yeah, the four foot fencing would be good.
Alan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, he actually already answered my comments, I was going to suggest some open style fencing as a condition of approval for the back there. But they already hammered that for me, so stole my thunder.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Actually, I'm pretty sure the applicant had already put that in the proposal, so I don't know, guys. No, I'm glad we're having this conversation because I, I'm in real estate and I've seen these issues in where HOAs have not maintained these areas and not only has it become trash and weeds, but there's also been activities that have not been beneficial to the neighborhood. You know, animals that are, that are kept back there, they use it as a dog run, try to grow things on it and those kinds of things. So whatever you can do to work with the city and Public Works Police Department, that would be helpful.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Borden.
Just a rezone, I don't know how you capture those elements or maybe they're just already part of it.
That is correct, whenever they, even though there's not a development agreement, they would still have to do design review for the duplexes. At the time of design review, we would make sure that any conditions of approval were met.
All right. Counsel, anything else? Do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Borden.
We close the public hearing on Elderberry Estates, H 2021-0044 and H 2021-0005.
Second motion?
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearings, are there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it and the items agreed to. Counsel, I'm Borden.
We approve item four, H 2021-0044 and H 2021-0005. The rezone application for Elderberry Estates subdivision to include all conditions of the staff report inclusive of the conditions added in tonight's hearing and agreed to by the applicant and.
My apologies, this is also a short plat, sir. So there'll be approval of the short plat and the rezoning and we could add a plat note to the short plat with any of the conditions that you wanted to add.
Okay. The motion for approval is for that too, I think that was the 0005 portion of it.
We made it as confusing as we could for you.
No worries. So I think that's the complete motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Schrader.
Second the motion, maybe a quick comment.
Have a motion, a second, counsel, I'm Schrader.
Like seeing this kind of small infill development, I think it's creative, it's a tough, it's a tougher site and I appreciate that you saw the potential on it. And I like seeing that kind of development here, especially in this area of the city, thanks.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
In the motion, do we need to specify what we had just recommended regarding working with Public Works and fencing and whatnot? Do we need to specify that for?
I was going to mention that, that would be helpful for me, council.
The county was a maker, motion maker, like I mentioned, their motion to include a statement that said a gravel pathway or other landscaping approved by Public Works?
Yes, and I think however it was articulated by Councilman Hoagland.
Okay, does the second agree?
Second agrees.
Okay, that's part of it, is there any further, any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden. Pearl.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and ayes are agreed to, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing from November 9, 2021 for Seltzer Square, H 2021-0072. We will continue this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Burnt.
Mr. Mayor, excuse my interruption, I would like to recuse myself from this portion of this item of our agenda, I have a financial, potential financial interest in this project.
Thank you.
Dilly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Try to make it less.
Try to make it less complicated than the other ones, but that's usually not my luck, so just plug away. As noted, the last item before you tonight is for Setler Square Development Agreement Modification. Site consists of nine acres of land, currently is on CC, located in the northwest corner of Eustick and Venable. It's at the half-mile mark between Linder and, what is that, Meridian Road? I don't know my arterial here yet, sorry. The project, or I should say the site, was annexed and zoned in 2008, and zoned to CC with an existing DA. The, there was a DA modification in 2016 that changed the interior sites, which is this approved existing concept plan. Changed the interior roads to private streets rather than public streets. The future land use designation on the site is mixed-use community. The request before you tonight is to modify the existing DA for the purpose of replacing the previous agreement and, and concept plan to incorporate a new concept plan consisting of both commercial and residential uses. This is the proposed concept plan. The existing DA requires, and the concept plan shows, that the entire site is to be developed with commercial and office uses, and incorporates two private roads, one going east-west and one going north-south through the site. In 2016, council approved the DA mod, again, to change the type of internal roads. The applicant's current proposal to replace the existing DA with a new one is for the purpose of incorporating new concept plan as shown with approximately 60 apartment units, which in my staff report or in my DA, did specify is no more than 60. For the submitted plan and concept elevations, which are these, the apartment units are proposed as townhome-style units in the form of fourplexes and threeplexes, which are color delineated on the color plan on the right. So you can see which ones are three, which ones are two, which ones are three-story, et cetera. Originally, staff recommended denial of this project, which was why we continued the project. And the applicant and I met again. The applicant provided a revised narrative, additional information, as well as revised the site plan. And therefore, we're here tonight. Your revised plan now shows some of these units fronting on green space along the east-west drive bisecting the site. So that would be these units here, which are now, and these, now theoretically, these are alley-loaded of some sort, still multifamily, but alley-loaded. In addition, the east-west street is now shown as a drive aisle instead of a private street, which can be better seen on this one here with detached sidewalk. And I should say, staff does support this change, because it offers the applicant the opportunity to provide those detached sidewalks, have bulbouts, and provide street trees, so parkways and street trees for an urban canopy, canopy for this community. The revised concept plan also shows additional pedestrian facilities within the residential portion of the site, detached sidewalks along that drive aisle, as noted, and a shared plaza. Staff can better support the revised concept plan as shown. There is a public street sub to the north property, property boundary, and is shown as terminating within the site as part of the multifamily drive aisles. I guess terminating wouldn't be the right word, but continuing into the site through the multifamily drive aisles. ACHD has, even though they don't comment on these, they have noted that they're amenable to that because it's residential to residential, so there's no need for a cul-de-sac. In addition, the applicant has agreed to provide cross-access to the remaining county's own parcel at the very southwest corner. So it's a little hard to see, but right here, they actually do have a shared property line that's really short, but the applicant has agreed, and we would require it of any future application on the west side of this as well, to provide cross-access here. Let me just go back to this for you. This connection to Eustick, or I should say, that, that would align with a future connection to Eustick that would align on the south side of Eustick, which is the only other access to Eustick that we really want. And then, and ACHD agrees with that. This connection to Eustick would provide both projects an access point to Eustick. Staff finds it is important to have this cross-access because the opportunity to provide easier access for future commercial uses on the subject site and help disperse traffic from both projects, both sites, onto Eustick by having a second connection beyond that of only Venable. The proposed multifamily use in the existing CC zoning district will require a future CUP approval, so this is not the first or not the last time that it would come before a public hearing. Staff would analyze the specific development criteria and those specific use standards at the time of the CUP submitted. Overall, with the applicant's revised concept plan, their color rendering, and additional context provided within their narrative, staff finds that the project now complies with the majority of the mixed-use policies. It provides a new housing type within this area for residents of different income levels and housing preferences, and provides adequate cross-access between parcels to relieve the stress on the arterial street system. Staff does recommend approval of the subject application, and will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, if you could just sort of walk me through what was originally intended here, from what I understand was commercial, and how this kind of revised concept with residential fits in with the, you know, comprehensive plan and everything we've set out for this property.
Yes, ma'am. Great question, Councilwoman Schrader. So when it was annexed and zoned in 2008, it was intended for commercial because of this whole mid-mile had a mixed-use community hub, which generally with the revised 2019 comprehensive plan, we don't, we don't do that much anymore. We find that the mid-mile commercial does not work as well as the larger arterial commercials. And so that was something that, it was carried over nonetheless, because we had some existing zoning already, so we, we kept the mixed-use designation in 2019 when we revised it. However, it's been sitting here empty since then, even though some rooftops are coming and have come online, as well as additional apartments on the south side and further to the east. And including to the south, the southeast corner of Venable here is gonna have more apartments. The commercial is still sat fairly vacant. Even on the east side, there's still some empty slots, from what I understand. Empty parcels. So the, the decision to add some more residential to this would really be for, frankly, that from my understanding of, from the applicant, is to just add more rooftops to the area and make the commercial along Eustick, which is generally the most feasible, rather than having it, again, as we've heard from previous applications, that second-tier commercial is just harder and harder to, to get moving and get going. I, again, losing commercial zoning, and I put this in my staff report, I've noted it to every applicant that comes through with these, you know, losing commercial zoning is hard. We have that trend in the city. I'm very, very well aware of that. I usually ask applicants to think very, very intently on how they want to do that and how they want to change those land uses. So staff recommending approval is not done lightly, hence why I originally recommended denial, because I didn't find that their new plan met those mixed-use policies with integration and pedestrian connectivity, as well as some shared spaces. I believe the mix is appropriate on the property. The other mixed-use community portions are pretty much all residential in this area, which is typical of mid-mile collectors and mid-mile areas. So that's a long-winded answer, but I hope I kind of walked you through some of that history and staff's thinking.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Not a question, but just kind of a heads up to John. It's probably what we're gonna hear some of, but, but part of the history, and you cited it in the report, is, I specifically remember this discussion we had when we approved the multifamily on the south side of Eustick, and some of the concern was there wasn't a commercial component. And, and we looked at the area, the region as a whole, and some of the commercial for that region was gonna be satisfied by this particular parcel. And that was a big, kind of a big deal then, and so we allowed that project on the south side to go forward without any commercial. It kind of hinged itself to what would ultimately come here, and I saw that history cited here. So we come in with some certain reluctance, like you're describing, Joe, in losing commercial, but also knowing that this, this area had sort of anticipated and relied upon this being the commercial solution for all of the residential around it. So I know your comments probably will address that concern that we might have going into the application.
Mr. Borden, those are.
I want to give you a heads up on that, yeah.
Great points, and I did call that out in my staff report, and you're right. That's why staff has made this recommendation very, you know, not taking it lightly. That was a, I mean, it was before my time with the city, but it is my understanding that those are some big discussions about why that was all residential and did not have that commercial component. So you are absolutely correct.
Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Mr. Mayor and council, for the record, my name is John Wardle. My address is 2929 West Navigator Drive, Meridian, Idaho 83642. If I can share my screen, I need Joe to stop sharing for a few moments. Perfect. Thank you. Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I'm sure I got. As mentioned by Joe and staff, we're discussing this nine-acre site here that's located on the northwest corner of Venable and Eustick. This settler square does have history. It was brought into the city back in 2007, annexed and zoned. I don't know if there was a DA at the time, but there definitely was a preliminary plat that was brought through at that time as well. That preliminary plat lapsed, and then back in 2015, 2016 timeframe, the property owner came back to the city with an updated site plan with a new development agreement in 2016, and again, the property has just stayed in the same state that it's in right now. Today, we are also asking for modifying that development agreement. We are the owners of that property now with our partners in this, which is Alteris. This is the site a little bit close in, again, nine acres on that northwest corner, and then I've just dropped in our site plan there. I'll come back to that in a moment. As mentioned, this site does have history. This actual designation, which is mixed-use community, goes all the way back to 2002. If we go back to 2002 comprehensive plan, there were a series of designations on those comprehensive plans, which were also identified as NCs, which were neighborhood centers. So this goes ways back, and if you looked at the comprehensive plan, and I can go back to that if there's questions later on, there were a, a lot of these mid-mile locations shown on the comprehensive plan, as well as these specific designations with the NCs. As the comprehensive plan was updated in 2011, many of those went away, and in 2019, there were only three of these mid-mile locations that remained on the comprehensive plan. In particular, this one maintained the community designation. This particular illustration here does show the current zoning as well in the area. This is true that this is a CC designation across the street, where you have the Jacksons and some small individual offices that is a CN designation, and then you have LO farther to the east. The LO designation for the park doesn't really count, but there is LO designation on the corner of Meridian Road and Eustick. Just bringing this full circle on where this fits in terms of the comprehensive plan, this is designated mixed-use community. The purpose of the designation is to allocate areas where community serving, serving uses and dwellings could be integrated within the community. This is the only remaining piece which has not been developed. The southeast corner is currently under development for, as mentioned, for residential, and we have some commercial across the street on the east, but the part to the south as well, on the southwest corner is also residential. A little bit deeper here, in terms of the mixed-use elements that the city needs to consider are, you know, some specific design elements here. Street connectivity, open space, pathways, residential densities. In, so where this comes into play in this lower right-hand corner, this is in your comprehensive plan as well, is kind of this vision for what the uses would be at these locations. As you'll note here, interestingly, on the mixed-use community, it's called out as arterial roads on both sides. In this case, we have an arterial road on the south, and we do have a collector which is Venable. However, that Venable really functions as a residential collector. It's not a through collector. It drops into a neighborhood which disperses really well, and if you want to get yourself to McMillan, you can do that, but it is not a typical collector. This is a residential collector, which is pretty limited. The goals of this, from the comprehensive plan, are, are short blocks, reduce travel lane widths, interconnected circulation patterns, providing access to neighborhood services, also a variety of housing choices. Also, the housing should radiate from more, or I should say, less dense on existing to more dense interior. That's a goal. And also using alleys and roadways as transition points between dissimilar land uses. So when you compare the site plan that we have with the, the model or the exhibit that's in the comprehensive plan, we're pretty similar, if you look at the context. When I did rotate it 190 degrees, where you have the arterial road on the south and a local collector road on the right or on our east, which is Venable, you look at how the commercial uses will step back from Eustick Road, and then we transition into residential heading north. These were provided to staff in our letter we gave on 11/22. So in the context of, of what the comprehensive plan designation is for mixed-use community, and also in the context of what this area was originally, you know, determined to be or designated to be, which is its neighborhood center, we are providing that step-back transition. The, the question that comes up is, you know, you know, this is the only location where we have nine acres of commercial. However, Venable is not a road that lends itself to that visibility. Once you get beyond the, that first row or first tier of commercial along Eustick, anything back behind will be single-tenant, specific little office buildings, and those will take time. We have a variety of projects, even project to the east here at Meridian Road and Setlers, which is on Meridian Road and Eustick, which is on two arterial roads, where the frontage has developed, but those back pads have taken a long time to develop, and I know that there have been other creative uses or requests brought to the city that may be not quite a commercial use, but residential in nature. The mixed-use goals and aspirations are being met with the revised plan that we have before you. It does blend well with the existing neighborhood, and it does blend within the context of the surrounding land uses, both north, or both north, south, east, and west. I wanted to talk a little bit about that commercial element because it's been brought up. I mean, this is on the half-mile. For commercial to be viable, visibility is important. But also that having the arterial roadway system there is important to allow that commercial to go deeper. Typically, in a site like this, if you were on both corners and we were to develop the whole site as, as commercial, you probably would have a larger anchor in the back with some smaller uses up front, so that there's visibility through. But this site just doesn't lend itself to that when you look at Venable being a residential collector. We are aligning our access with the commercial on the other side, so there won't be conflicts. We are trying to do some things with the site plan that I'll be able to show that to you here in a second. But one of the things that came up early on, we did a pre-application meeting with staff back in May. We did show the entire site as residential, and staff was clear that there was a, it was important for us to demonstrate commercial here. We don't feel like commercial is viable on the whole site, but commercial, some level of commercial is viable. As I noted in my letter to staff, we do have an agreement, a contract with St. Luke's, to build a 15,000-square-foot clinic here. As a comparison, it's very similar to the clinic that we built with them out at Hill Century Farm at Hillsdale and Amity Road, also on the half-mile. St. Luke's felt like this was an area that they could bring a service to, a full-service clinic to North Meridian that currently doesn't exist, and so they're, they're excited that they want to be here. But again, the rest of the property, in our, in our view, is not viable for commercial. As I mentioned here, St. Luke's will provide a needed service, and when I say that they want to begin, they want to begin in earnest on this, as we've had conversations with them. We do believe some commercial is, can be incorporated. We do believe some commercial is can be incorporated and we're showing that. We also have an additional site next to St. Luke's that would be ancillary to that, whether they would want to expand in the future or we could have something compatible. That's the idea there with we would maintain additional commercial property on the frontage of Eustick. Just some design elements, because this was an item that we needed to resolve or talk with staff about, and we appreciate Joe's time to meet with us and work through this. Some of the elements, going back to the Conference of Plan on permanent design and place making, proportional private open spaces, access through residential types. So I just want to go through those really quickly. One of the things that we had brought forward in our design was that east-west road, we were proposing that it would be a public road so that it would tie into the west. There are some complications of tying into the west where we have one small piece down to the south and a larger piece to the north. Those are ownerships are not combined ownerships. They're separate, but the property of the north would end up having three public roads or three access points coming into it. The staff has asked us to eliminate that, make this a private drive aisle where we can treat it like we would any residential street where we could have parking on both sides. There'd be bulb outs, also the ability enhanced pedestrian access back and forth, north and south, and front lawn housing, but not connect that to the west. Also, to to create a little bit more sense of place, we brought the amenity building that will be that will be reviewed through a future conditional use permit right up to the corner of Venable and across from St. Luke's, again, across from the Jacksons and those offices over there. So we're kind of creating a little bit of a a sense of arrival. There will be a a public plaza that will be in front of that amenity building as well. We are providing a good transition both from Venable and heading north of mix of uses here, both with the residential uses, which I'll get here on the next page. Design circulation, as I mentioned, we are going to provide a cross access to that future connection, which is aligned with Blairmore to the south. We have made enhancements with pedestrian access to and through the site and also staff has requested another pedestrian access on this side, which we can accommodate, bulb outs and onsite parking here with this site. And finally, the residential piece. Again, we know that we have existing residential around us. The the homes that are around us right now are predominantly two-story homes. The the townhomes that would be directly adjacent to those would also be two-story townhomes. In the interior, however, we would step up, the middle units would be three-story and the end units will also be two-story units. In order to provide that step back to the property, there is onsite parking, additional onsite parking that we will work through, but we do more than exceed the new UDC standards of additional guest parking. All the units have a two-car garage plus a driveway that would allow additional parking there in front of each of those homes. We feel like this does provide a third use instead of a typical apartment type project. We're offering a townhome type project here. These will be rentals. It will be common ownership. We don't, we will not be selling these individually. We are providing or bringing a community-serving medical clinic and future office uses. And we also believe that the mixed use community designations are achieved, that the residential amenity helps frame the project. We have Gathering Plaza opposite of St. Luke's. We're bringing a very good user in terms of St. Luke's to provide a service which is not readily available in the area. And we're also providing those goals of a tree-lined east-west corridor, bulb outs and some pedestrian access there. One request that we we made on when we submitted our our comments last week was a new provision number 10, which would just allow, which we've done with other commercial projects, but allow the the commercial project specifically St. Luke's to move forward prior to a final plat. I know that we've conditioned those in the past that CFOs have been conditioned on the final plat being done, but this allows that to move forward quickly. And I believe staff is in concurrence with that request as well. In conclusion, we just request that City Council approve this request to modify this development agreement. Once again, we feel like we've developed a plan which is supported by the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. We are bringing neighborhood supporting commercial uses and there are improved changes to the site plan that enhance the overall design and also anchor Venable and Eustick in the future. We request that provision number 10 be added to the DA and just stand for any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thanks a lot. Good to see you. I'm sorry it's so late at this point, but.
Sorry to you that it's so late, so.
It's just, this is just a regular Tuesday for us. We're used to it now.
Nothing.
This is early still for us.
Remember like 1:00 AM? This is early. Didn't you recuse yourself?
Yeah, pipe down there, Trigg. Sorry about that. So my question, okay, so I appreciate that you showed up with commercial for sure, because I think you knew that that that's going to be really tough without any commercial. A lot of medical office users love to co-locate. Now that you have an anchor tenant in St. Luke's, do you truly feel that that second tier of retail is not viable, even if you gave it time to bring some doctor's offices in some complimentary medical uses? Could you talk about that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, I do. And that's not me just, you know, trying to to appease you. The the mid mile locations, when you do not have the visibility from two major arterials are really hard to get those uses behind to generate. If I can just share with you a real life example of that. Cedar Springs North, which is one mile to the north, you can kind of drive or you can kind of draw a line between Venable and the road going to the north and you get you get to the half mile as well. This project was developed in 2005. It was almost identical in size, eight acres at the mid mile. They put a building right on the corner, although wasn't a medical user, but I put a building right on the corner. And as of today, it stays exactly the same. This is an aerial, here we are nearly 15 years later. And they have one building, which is this building right there that's been developed in 15 years. Why that's important is we, you know, going back to what's around it. So again, the picture up here in the upper left is 2005. The picture in the lower right is 2021. You can tell Paramount didn't exist. There was nothing going on. The settler's corner didn't exist. And now all of a sudden you start looking to see what's happened. You know, the things that have built out here at Paramount Square. It's not a surprise that the pieces that are on the frontages of those arterial roads have gone first. And the pieces back behind have been very specific. The one that we have is a daycare. But then you look at the other corner on Linder and McMillan, fully built out. But we have residential back behind it, the the piece up front and you have two arterial roads there, works really well. It it won't be a surprise, I think, to anybody that for a long time, the property that will sit behind what is Fancy Freeze and Tin Roof Tacos will sit vacant just because of the visibility. It's very hard short of it being a specific user such as insurance or, you know, maybe a daycare that would take those spots because the prices are going to be lower. I don't think, I don't think price is an issue if you look at Cedar Springs North. It's got rooftops. It's got some things around it, but it has just not ever developed. So from our perspective, those half miles and it's probably not it's not by accident that those half mile designations on the Conference of Plan have gone away over time because they've just proven not to be overly viable the deeper you go on those sites.
Mr. Mayor, I can follow up.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read, you know, Compass is producing a new report now for us. And so if you look at at the report they produce, it's it's very clear that this road is like an R or something. I have to pull it up real quick, but the road had a bad rating. And then what they look at is a ratio of jobs to housing. And this will, this is, we're always going to be playing catch up. So maybe it takes us 20 years, maybe takes us an unfortunate amount of time to get the proportion of all other uses besides residential that we need as a city. That's our burden to bear. But I guess if you have an anchor like St. Luke's, I guess I'm surprised that you wouldn't be willing to give that some time, maybe develop that first and see if you do have that demand there for complimentary medical uses, just because that's such a sticky. It's not the same as your as your other development. You have a a pretty sticky tenant there. And I would hope that you could, but it sounds like you're saying no, it's not viable. The second tier is just too too tough.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, yes, that's what we are saying. It is too tough, especially on a half mile arterial with a residential collector. There's just no, there's no visibility back behind that arterial road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Okay, one more, just because I I'm going to push you a little bit. Would you be willing to take just the commercial piece of your development for approval if you didn't have the residential piece? Would it still work for you?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. It it doesn't work for us. And I think we would be back in front of you in not so many years with a situation just like this where site is built out and there's nothing that's happening behind the the most viable place for this location. So.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. All the same questions as Councilwoman Schrader. We recently have had a couple of applications before us with similar concerns, a property that has sat that has been designated as commercial and now being requested for modifications for residential because they feel like there's a length of time that has passed that the the commercial properties have not been sold or developed. But in all of those situations, there were access issues, whether it was off Eagle Road or or whatnot. I don't see that being an issue here in terms of actual. Now, it is not, is it, like you said, it's bordered by a residential collector and not an arterial. There's not an actual access issue in terms of legal access. So for me, the timeframe that it has sat is not concerning because we still don't have the full residential development done out there. I mean, there's quite a bit of property, if I remember correctly, on the south side of the street. Still, there's still some property on the north side, all open land. And I just struggle with being able to say that we that, you know, we've waited a long enough amount of time to give up that commercial because you know, it's been 10 years or or whatnot, or because of Cedar Springs. By the way, they are digging ground on another on another building out there.
Yep, I saw that.
Doesn't mean that it's happened quickly, but it's coming now and and it's probably coming now because now the residential is built out all around it. So who's to say that that isn't going to be a similar situation in this case? And so I just, you know, I get I get applicants requesting a change in concept plan to a DA to residential because there are access concerns, but to say it's sat long enough without interest when we don't have the residential fully built out and 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 the commercial is going to follow the rooftops. I don't I don't know how to justify that, I guess, in this situation. And we already have had many conversations about the commercial that we have agreed to get developed with a different use because of other concerns that the applicant has no control over.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a comment on that.
I don't think it was a question, but it is a comment.
Councilman Perrow. I think the city should consider what their their land uses are. And I'm, we aren't coming here tonight without that in mind. The thing, however, is that the that this site has had a vested right as commercial for a long time. It's been there. The market tells you whether it's viable or not. The fact that we were able to bring St. Luke's along is good. That's a good use for for that location. But I can honestly tell you that the second tier back behind will will struggle. It will sit there perhaps for another 10, 15 years. And we do not feel like that this site will ever realize the full potential of the underlying CC designation. So that's why we're asking for the opportunity to bring to the city a mixed use project, which gives you commercial, which brings a really strong community need today and then allows us to also provide additional housing and, you know, in a location that does have other services around, not just not just commercial services, but you have good schools nearby, you have a huge park nearby. So we we feel for those reasons that we can accomplish the goals that the city wants for this location for mixed use and bring to you a commercial user and also bring to you some residential uses too.
Council, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Timeframe. So would you expect that the commercial tenant would come in first and then the residential would come later? Help walk us through the phasing of that, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, that's a great question. Yes, that's correct, because that is zoned commercial. And we were asking for an early permit for that commercial user. They could go through the CZ process and come in ASAP. The residential piece of it still requires a conditional use permit. There are still things that we need to do on that, but it's important to go ahead for us to get the improvements done with this east-west drive aisle so that St. Luke's can move forward. So that east-west drive aisle to the south would be the initial improvements that would be made. And then we would also be working in concert to do the residential piece through the CUP process. And just to clarify, the the CUP can't go forward unless the the development agreement is is modified, which is before you tonight.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
What is the the piece in the southwest corner that would also be classified as commercial? How how large of a property is that? What's the acreage left on that?
Where I show this tree-lined street. The the St. Luke's property is about 1.75 acres and the remaining piece is about an acre and a half.
Okay. Are you anticipating another individual user or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perrow. St. Luke's has the right to do that. So whether they would expand add another clinic or also work through another type of supporting use, that's that's what they're looking at, that they would be involved in that decision.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up.
Councilwoman Perrow.
So that's not going to bring any other use than medical that entire south?
At this point, I
Commercial section.
At this point, I can't say that it would. I believe that it would be something that would be supportive or ancillary to what St. Luke's is going to do.
Okay, Council, this is where I'd normally, at least see if we have anyone else testify. We have nobody in the room and no one online. But I feel obligated to at least say, is there anybody that'd like to write testimony on this item? Oh, I'm sorry. I've been, I you're blocking the one person's. Is there anybody that'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time?
Mr. Mayor, there was somebody signed in, but he left before the previous hearing. Just want to make sure, make that aware.
Okay. Well, then, John, we'll leave you here for questions or your final comments, which everyone council eventually wants to get to. Well then, John, we'll leave you here for questions or your final comments, which everyone council eventually wants to get to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Go for one more. Could you walk us through the open space and amenities real quick? I feel like it kind of got glossed over. I'm a little concerned that it's off to the side. I don't love that, but you know, tell me why it works that way, please.
Councilman Strater, I, I would like to note that with the future C U P, I will definitely have to hammer them on some of those specific use standards. Like as shown, I don't anticipate they'll meet the open space standards just because they've been increased with our latest revisions. So I do want to note that there, John and I have discussed is there will likely be some, some changes to that.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater. Originally, we had our community amenity, which was a building shown here in the right-hand corner. And I'll just go to a different. Over here on the right-hand corner with Venable, it was interior originally. We felt like, again, for place-making purposes, that bringing it out to the corner to kind of create where we have across the street, a couple of office buildings, that it would, it would frame that intersection. Internal to that, um, we're going to have a fitness room facility. There'll be game room and also a location for kind of that office space, getting out of your unit, but being able to go over there. There's other amenities which are not identified here, um, but which we still need to work through. But that's the reason we moved it over there. Originally, it was over, um, kind of in the middle. But we moved it so that we could create and frame that corner a little bit better with a building that was complimentary to what St. Luke's would do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, originally, when I saw this, it sort of struck me like, I wonder if you could put another commercial building there, right? Because you're, I mean, and granted, collector, it's not ideal, but you know, you're right across from some fairly complimentary uses. At least it's, it's in the second tier, but at least it's off of a main road. In fairness to you, I don't know how great that would integrate with the residential piece. But that just sort of struck me, just for some feedback.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater. Honestly, we did look at it for a half a second, but because of that integration coming into the residential piece of it with that corner up there, we just felt like it was, so for example, if that was a daycare, you could imagine what that internal circulation ends up being in the morning to drop kids off. It becomes, you know, it just becomes a loop. And I think introducing that commercial element, we felt like was, uh, we would just be asking for some, people would be asking for changes, I'm pretty sure, based on that circulation. So we decided instead of doing a commercial use on that side, we would bring the amenity building out to the corner. Although it doesn't serve as a neighborhood, uh, commercial use, it still looks and feels like that. Also for context, the remaining property here ends up being about five, uh, I think 5.8 acres that would be residential. And it puts it up just, you know, around just under 10 units of the acre. So it's not a large parcel of residential, but that's kind of just give you a, a feel for what's there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Did you get any comments or feedback from the residential to the north?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Borton, um, we did have a, we had our neighborhood meeting and we had a little bit of follow-up with that. The, the comments from the four individuals who did participate in our area meeting was that they were relieved it wasn't three-story apartments, that it was something that was compatible to them in terms of size and scale directly against them. And that was the main comment, uh, from them. The other comment was, you know, improvements on Venable. Our side of the road is not improved. Um, it is, uh, you have curb and gutter on the east side, but our side is not improved and looking to have those improvements in place, um, including sidewalks, which are not there going north on Venable on our side. So that was the biggest question is will the road get finished? And that with this project, the road will get finished.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Something to be said that there's not a bunch of people in the room right in opposition to this, this change.
And Mr. Mayor, the property to the north, uh, Mr. Borton, um, uh, Woodburn. Let's see if I can get to an aerial here.
Right.
Yep, this is it. They actually have, uh, attached townhomes in the middle of their project as well. So it's not a, a use that they're unfamiliar with, and I, I think it ends up being very compatible, um, with what's there right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, show.
Not to belabor this further, just wanted to note that the only public testimony, written testimony that we got was actually, I would say 90% of that was actually regarding the school district parcel across the street. So, um, I, to Mr. Borton's point, you know, that also shows evidence of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just a comment, uh, to close out where I, I don't know if you've got more to add, but, the history, excuse me, the history of this gave me concern coming into it, that it did seem like the commercial was like squeezing toothpaste and it just kept moving around and shrinking and, and that T N R to the south really relied on this, but it may have never truly been commercial in the first place, just to your description of how it was placed back in 08, but it really perhaps wasn't viable. The history you described is important. Like, my boys grew up, I've been in that across the street, that little heron. I forget what it's called. Where the gas station is and the garbanzo pizza and they've been there every day for eight years. And, uh, we parked there because there was never any businesses there. So I think it might illustrate some of the challenges that commercial has. So I, your point's well taken that it very well ma- might make sense to do exactly what you're describing. The townhome solution looks very appealing, no surprise, and this location near, uh, this massive regional park plus, uh, near public schools seems to have the resources necessary for it. So my concern, I think, has been quelled a bit by some of your description and, and I think staff's comfort with this goes a long way, frankly. We rely heavily on how they think this might fit and if this, I'll call it an exception makes sense, so. That being said, all of this is, I think I've got support for what you're requesting, at least from me. Under these very specific circumstances, so I think you've done a good job articulating that and appreciate staff's cautious reluctance to see if you can clear a high bar and looks like you have, in my opinion. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoggan.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort you've gone through and working with staff to, to make this work and to, to meet that mixed use designation. I think that's important and, and we stayed true to that. It may not be what was initially envisioned, but it is mixed use and offers employment and, and kudos for landing a clinic such as St. Luke's. I mean, that, uh, it's not a dentist office. I mean, they're everywhere. Back in Bridgetown, I just live a mile and a half or two, two miles once you go in from this. But at our mid-mile with, uh, access, uh, for residential, um, it's, it's three dental offices. Uh, one, one surgery and two other dental offices, you know? That's, uh, that, that's it. And, and if you notice for our, our Fields District tonight, there's no mid-mile requirement for retail or, or commercial. I mean, it's, it is difficult and we had that one on Franklin here a while back that, uh, we let them relinquish that and go to, go to residential because there is great difficulty in, in doing that. And, um, so I, I think, uh, you've, you've got the C U P process to go through for the rest of that, to make sure everything works. You know, I'm, I've used that gas station quite a bit until Costco came in. And, uh, uh, but I, I, I do like the fact that you're matching up the, the commercial on the other side. That, that makes sense. It's not such a huge development that it's way out of whack, that they have to walk a long ways or anything like that. So I, I can see your, your thinking on that. So, and plus the, the, um, cross-axis easement that is in place there, I think will be, will be useful down the road. And it's not a drive aisle through a parking lot. I mean, you've made it a, a true, uh, true roadway. So, uh, I appreciate that attention to detail for that, John, and, uh, and, and, and I don't have any issue with, uh, starting with that, that commercial right away. I think it shows some energy and things happening and I, I, I think that's a good thing.
And personally, I think everything is relative. You know, in South Meridian, in certain areas, we would love to have commercial on every corner, every mile, but we don't and we never will. Um, and so if our standard is a quarter mile from commercial, which is what you would essentially be requiring by, requiring more, then that's a great standard to have. But I was even trying to remember back to the comp plan, the, um, not comparing because we don't have a project, but on Victory Road on the north side of Tuscan, that at one point in time was as a neighborhood commercial. Um, I think that was removed when we did, um, our last element. So, yeah, I think this just is a holdover of something that was, like I said, we knew it was, it's not viable, you know, and, and that's, and quite frankly, in South Meridian, that's a desert of commercial in that area around Victory and Locust Grove that won't be there. So a mile to services is not uncommon, um, in the south. Doesn't mean we don't need more, but it, it does, in my opinion, pass the intent test from that standpoint, you know? It, it brings jobs, it brings services. Now, you do have one mile away up on Frank and Cherry. You do have existing, you know, health centers, not that far away, but you don't have anything much north that I, that I could think of. So does deploy services deeper into our community. I think it blends well with the other resources that are there from the Usted corner down, the church, the, uh, park, healthcare, some initial services. There are dentists that Usted, uh, through that standpoint, plenty and plenty of them, that standpoint. So I think it blends well with what's, what's there and was needed. And I like the products, the housing product personally. Wish it was for sale condos, but still like the visual of what is being proposed. Councilman Strater.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor. Really glad you showed up with a tenant and showed up with a commercial. I would have been a no if not for that. Kind of still holding out hope, like move forward on your commercial. I think I can get on board with this. I like the transition. I like how it looks. I do like the residential product you're putting in. Part of me, just in the back of my mind, thinks, Sam, there's a chance you might get some complimentary tenants that want to co-locate there with St. Luke's or maybe St. Luke's wants another, even additional option to expand, given how much they're growing. So I guess I'd say I'm open-minded to that. If you came back and had to pivot a little bit to add more commercial, like that'd be phenomenal. I, I get it, like not every site is going to be viable for commercial, but it's tough. We have to hold the line because, you know, we just can't, can't get more of it and it takes a lot longer than residential. So, yeah, I understand it's frustrating. I appreciate the effort that you put forward in getting St. Luke's here. I think that's probably the biggest factor for me and I'll be supportive. Thanks.
Council, any further questions, comments? Did the applicant have an opportunity to officially make any final comments? Councilman Perrow.
This is a question for staffer for the applicant. Just, just curious about the property to the west. That's R U T. Um, how will this affect the development of that? What is the current, is that already? Settlers West multifamily?
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilman Perrow, um, I have a little bit of knowledge of that only because that, um, applicant, um, had a neighborhood meeting and they also, I believe they submitted applications for annexation and zoning. And so this kind of shows what's happening to the west. There's a, there's a out parcel to the north. And then there's this property called Settlers West Multifamily, which aligns with Blairmore on the south. And that's what Joe had mentioned about that cross-access coming in out of the site eventually to Blairmore. They, I believe, were going to show an access going north and they have a road that would come into that as well, that out parcel developed. So that's our understanding of what, um, they are, uh, considering bringing to you. And I believe they're, they are two-story, um, multifamily based on the neighborhood meeting that, uh, we were brought into the loop on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, show.
Yeah, John let the cat out of that bag a little bit, but that's no worries. I, that is an application coming before you eventually, but, um, it's just the annexation and zoning for that at this time. But I believe because of that weird shape of that parcel, I've met with that parcel, I don't know, six times maybe in the last year and a half. And nobody has really stuck. I've had recycled site plans that were garbage, should just, nobody's been able to make anything stick. I'm hoping the proposal coming before you in the future is, is better because of its use. Not just traditional multifamily, but also affordable. But it, with that cross-access, which John and I discussed a lot, and, and I wanted to make sure that we had that is not just pedestrian, but also vehicular to get up to Venable, but also to utilize some of that commercial. I think that, again, as you have this more direct connection, you're going to get some activation of the commercial uses, which I do appreciate. I think there's plenty of room on that west piece for a few pad sites, if not one larger one. That's left over from the proposal. Now, the out parcel and those, where it gets connection and activity or connectivity from is frustrating. I assume they would head north and probably connect to this street that would now be Blairmore, but I can't guarantee that. I don't think making this property owner stuff to that, as was previously, and I think the existing concept plan makes a lot of sense because then that road, that parcel just becomes all road. You're, it's just going to be a T-intersection of road. So, um, I, I don't think that their current layout inhibits that at all. I think it would complement it. And we're going to, we need that cross-access, so if we can get that, I'm all for it.
Councilman Perrow.
Joe, what's the future land use designation on that west piece?
That piece is also mixed-use community for some reason that I don't know.
So should we look at, at all of those uses? I mean, that's a significant amount of res- residential for mixed-use community in that entire corner, isn't it? As a percentage of what we'd like to see from mixed-use community?
Well, when you look at the total percentages, I'm sure that it's over for, but it, there's no maximum. There's just a minimum that mixed-use community talks about, which I believe is, shoots for 40% at least in order to activate the commercial. But then you also have, you know, part of the park is a huge acreage in there. And then you also have the school site that takes out acreage. So you have things working against that ratio in a normal mixed-use community area. And, and we do take that into account. I, I, again, I'm not a market guy, but I do happen to agree with, with a lot of what Mr. Ward has said. And, and I've seen this throughout and as noted, we've taken these out of our comp plan because of these continual issues that we've had. And if we have mid-mile stuff, it's probably going to be neighborhood serving. That's really what you're going to get out of it, you know? So I, we have taken that into account. Again, as Mr. Borton said, I, I fought John all the way through this and made him, put the onus on him to provide adequate context and information for this. And, and put that bar high. You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, Council, first, um, again, thanks for letting us just have an opportunity of this conversation. I, we also, uh, take community building very important and do not take lightly the, uh, removal of opportunities, but also realistic with what the market. And I know you hear that all the time. But based on our experience over the years, um, this site cannot be or will not be developed as commercial, um, for the entire nine acres. I, I will give staff credit for, um, asking us to go back and reevaluate. And when we reevaluated, we, we were looking for what that right commercial user would be. And we feel like St. Luke's does provide something here that is beneficial to the community. We just simply ask that you allow us to to develop this in a way that is complementary to the uses that are there. We feel like we have made good transitions to the north. We feel like we've maintained the mixed-use designation by having commercial along Usted. And we we feel like this will be a good way to take property where services already exist and and develop it. Again, we request your approval to modify the development agreement, also including that provision number 10, which allows for building permits on the commercial uses to proceed the final plat. And then we will come back with a CUP for the residential piece through that proper channel. So Sam, for any questions you might have, but just simply ask for your approval of the modified development agreement before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan.
John, I wanted to make sure, understand correctly, that provision number 10, you confer with staff report, including provision number 10. So that's one that you want to add to the the request, but it is in the, in their language currently. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huglan, I don't, the staff report that you received did not have condition number 10. We submitted a letter last week to the, to the city clerk. We discussed this language with staff. I believe staff is in agreement with that and they can confer. But this would be the language that we would want you to add into Roman numeral six A, number 10, would be this language right here. That the applicant be allowed to obtain two building permits for the commercial portion prior to any subdivision of the property.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
That is correct, what what John has said. He initially asked for just one, and I said, why don't, why don't you have two, just in case someone, another commercial thing comes along quick, which is also pretty standard for what we, when we do these.
Anything else? Then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Move that we close public hearing.
A motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Eyes have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I move that we approve item number five, the Settler Square DA modification, H 2021-0072, with the addition of this additional provision number 10 that we allow two building permits on commercial to proceed, to proceed ahead of the final plat or to any subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Huglan.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our last couple of action items of the evening. First item up is the third reading of Borton's number 21-1954. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Meridian, Idaho, approving the option A Urban Renewal Plan for the Northern Gateway District Urban Renewal Project, which plan includes revenue allocation, financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to county and state officials and affected taxing districts, taxing entities, providing severability, approving the summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title, so maybe like it's read in its entirety? Seeing no one, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 21-1954.
Second the motion. I have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
Oh, we, we have all eyes and one abstention from Mr. Borton. Oh, any opposed? All eyes, no opposed, one abstained. Okay. Next item is third reading of Borton's number 21-1956. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Meridian, Idaho, approving the First Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for the Union District Urban Renewal Project, which First Amendment seeks to annex certain parcels to the existing Union District project area, which First Amendment includes revenue allocation, financing provisions, authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to county and state officials and affected taxing entities, providing severability, approving the summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, you've heard this one is read by title. Is there anybody who would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none? Do I have a motion? And an abstention?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Move that we approve ordinance number 21-1956.
Second the motion.
I have a motion to approve ordinance number 21-1956. Any statements before we take a vote, voice vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the item is agreed to. Councilman Burt. Council, anything on the future meeting topics? Then, Councilman Burt. Yes. I have motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are adjourned.